Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board, our August 27th, 2024 meeting. The start time, oh, the start time is 6:04 PM. I know, we always miss that for the minutes. Ian, I am going to take a roll call vote, just to see who's here and who's virtual. Amanda? Just say here if you're here. No Amanda yet?
Here, I'm here, I'm not used to, I forgot all about mute and not mute.
It's okay, I'm like, she's here.
Hello.
Hi.
Allyn?
E, here.
Virtual. Peter?
Here.
Yep, virtual Peter. Paul?
Here.
Present. Alex?
Here.
Virtual. Tracy?
Here.
And Paula, here. And I'm gonna read a brief opening statement, our planning board comments. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. One would be state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the planning board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by stating their name and address. And none. Alright. Our first item on our agenda this evening, we have a category of approval not required plans, A and R, which we have none. Our second category this evening is minor site plans. We do have one continued from last month of 72 to 80 Franklin Road, which is also known as 491 Electric Ave, with the applicant proposing use of a church and existing storefront located with Park Hill Plaza Zone Commercial. This is for a change of use that's triggered the A plan.
Chantel, do you know their name? Cause I have four names on here, three of which I am not certain.
The person I've been in contact with, their name is, it's a very unique name.
Okay, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I know at least two of the people on here.
Right.
Okay. I guess one first question would be whether or not we've actually received any additional information from the Plaza owner regarding the breakdown.
And I sent them an email. I think I CC'd you both, and I never got a response. So I can send a formal letter if you want. It just depends on where you'd like to go from here with this. The person I've been talking to is Jaredine Oskantin.
Okay, yeah, not, not on virtually.
Okay.
And the, there was an extension signed until this meeting date?
Yeah, until this meeting date, it's actually for tomorrow. So, um, it's, it's up to you how you'd like to proceed with this. I can send a formal letter with our letterhead, you know, if that doesn't get a response, I'm not quite sure.
Can I have their suggestion? Just hold it till the end of the meeting. If he doesn't show, then we'll take it out.
So does no one here for this?
There's no one here for this.
No.
So I did, we'll mention this, we'll move this on.
As long as we gotta remember to go back to it at the end of the meeting.
We do have to take it, we take an action on this. This evening, we do not have enough information administratively. Our next item under minor site plans is 69 Cully Street. The applicant Stephen Sene proposes a motor vehicle repair or body shop to rebuild, about approximately 1,200 square feet in the neighborhood business district.
Steve's virtual. All you gotta do is hit unmute, Steve, and you can talk.
Alright guys, can you, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Alright. I'm not sure if you can see me.
We cannot.
Alright, hang on.
Okay, do you, do you want to be seen, Steve? Because we'd have to promote you to a panelist if you wanna be seen.
Oh no, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just didn't know if it was something on my end. Thank you.
Nope, you're good. So let me, hold on, let me pull up, uh, let me pull up the site plan on the screen so everyone can, we can all see the same thing. Bear with me for one second. Alright. Alright, let me just center it here, and then you can give us an overview, Steve.
Oh, just tell me when you're ready, guys.
We are all set.
Okay.
What your planning, what your plans are.
Uh, just, it's a, about a 1,200 square foot shop building for building trade or storage.
Okay, that's different than automotive. Just saying garage bays, different requirements for parking than automotive. It's two spaces per service bay for automotive, and it's one space per 1,000 squeet for bill, per thousand square feet for a building trade shop. So we just gotta know which one you're going with to know the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure where you're getting the, the automotive part from, but that's not our intent, and it never has been.
Okay, I just, that's how it was advertised, so that's all I have to go off of, so.
Okay, no, so the, I guess the only, so originally, it was zone commercial automotive. So this had a zoning change through the city. So I think I might have just noted that in my application. But we, and I think I even said in the application that we are not looking to do, like an automotive, you know, service or any kind of related kind of stuff in that building. It'd be just a building trade, building trade or allowable use, you know, or a storage business.
So.
You know, like a storage area, a storage shop.
What is the existing building on the site? Square footage?
It is just a wood frame garage.
Nope, the one to the right, it's all the same parcel.
I'll pull up the pictures I have them here, Paula, that way you can.
Yeah, the large building. Middle building.
Hold on one second, let me pull up your photos so that we can all make sure we're talking about the right one.
Yep.
Alright, hold on one second. Screen share, share.
That building.
That's on.
That's a, that's a different lot.
Yeah, it's the lot next door, it's the one that says existing building next to it.
If, if I could.
Okay, where's the lot?
If you look at the.
Where's the lot line?
Right by pole six, move your cursor down a little bit. Uh, to your right.
Oh, right here?
Yep, that's the lot line.
Okay, well, I can see there's an issue there already with the parking on a separate lot for that building.
Uh, so actually, that parking will be for the existing building at number 59 Cully Street. So when we do this, we can adjust it through an A and R plan to, to be in the right location.
So move it kinda over here where I'm pointing, Steve?
Correct.
Yeah, between the.
Correct, yes.
So, okay, so the final site plan, what you're saying is the final site plan would have a property line this, between these two buildings, between the building and the parking lot?
Correct, yes.
So previous, so, so that was like one of the aspects previously because we have to look at the entire site, and that lot line really wasn't clarified, so we were looking at what the entire site was doing. Notice that there's been some additional new paving in that area, and those parking lots, those parking spaces are not striped.
Correct, we just have not had it done yet. The paving was done last fall, and we wanted to seal coat the parking area and then have it striped.
So that, does that line up with the parking that you show here?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so this is, Paula, this is your picture.
Yeah. So I've, I've, I'll bring this up, cause we, we mentioned previously with this plan, there are a number of, some issues. Notably, you know, the building size for that spot, and the parking of not backing up into the street, and even the parking proposed seems to be, um, of questionable here, not that orientation for vehicle parking. How about, about the square footage size, but now bring this out to the board too. What about accessing that, that building, the proposed building from the parking area that you're doing the lot split on? And just putting some parking off to the right-hand side as well? You know, just making that the park, the parking lot and also the access point for the garages versus trying to come in on the triangle?
I, I do think that, so.
You know what I'm saying?
Right, I do think that, that I, so I was more concerned, had this been an automotive use, I'm less concerned as a building trade, because generally speaking, I think what that ends up being is, you know, one contractor car or whatever, pickup, drop-off. I, I don't think the parking as, is as much of an issue, which is part of the reason why it's required less than our zoning ordinance. And I do appreciate now that the, the overhead doors go towards the parking lot and not towards Cully Street, which was an original problem we had. I do agree with you, Paula, I mean, it's a small site, but there's, I mean, other than frontage, there's no setbacks in that district, so, you know, it's.
Well, yeah, there's supposed to be a buffer between the two residential, between the residential and the zone. Putting something up against it, like, see the shrubberies? I'll just say that later on. Like move the line down against the build, should be against the building and not just on the area that's not. The, also the excess, this is, it only needs two parking spaces. And what you've shown here is not an orientation for parking. You would just drive up and park next to the front of the building, and you don't need two 26-foot wide access points. Why you need two driveways for two parking spaces? For that, unless you're doing just something circular and a very, and more narrow for two parking spaces. But you can, it's almost taking the parking space to the, the access driveway to the west, coming in, closing off the one to the east, and then just parking straight up against the building and have enough space to back out, turn around and.
Right, is, is there a reason why you need the two driveway entrances, Steve?
Uh, yes, if I can kind of address that. So with moving those overhead doors off of Cully Street, which, you know, I, I fully understand the board's point of view on that. So with moving the doors and keeping them smaller on the left-hand side of the building, if you, say you have a truck and you, you know, wanna back a truck up to the door and take out some materials or whatever, you know, you wanna have some room, you know, for parking, you know, for vehicles, that way you're not kinda jammed up. So if you have a couple of, couple of employee, you know, parking spaces, and you have a service truck that pulls up and they wanna back up to a door, you know, you have, you have plenty of room in there.
Well, then you look.
Or if you have, or if you have a larger truck, like I say, maybe a 26-foot, you know, 26-foot kinda sized truck, you know, you really wanna have some, some ability to kinda maneuver and, you know, get to those doors on the side of the building.
Well, you seem to be adding a lot more, more to the movement to the site than what it potentially can handle. It's tiny, isn't that really, and the maneuvering in that, as well as in the triangle. You still haven't shown how you can fit parking in there, not, this orientation isn't gonna pretty much fly for that. It should be like.
Well, I think this, this, the parking was laid out for two legal parking spots. We have a parallel spot and a, a head-end spot.
Mm-hmm. And I.
And that still maintains access to our overhead doors.
I'm not sure I would agree with two 26-wide access points on that spot either. Again, it's, it's on a narrow area to be so wide for a 1,200-square-foot building. That's kind of large. It just, that's usually for a plaza. We don't even have small pla, like with two 26, we have one driveway of 24-foot width. That's enormous.
Let me see.
I think almost all the buildings on that street have pretty similar access to the street.
Well, it's cause they had no curb cuts to begin with, they should be shored up. Technically.
I'm gonna pull up, trying to pull up a street scene here, if you bear with me for a second.
Yeah, larger properties too, but also they, there's, the curb cut should be a lot narrower for the drug, entrances, they shouldn't be just open to the street.
Let's see, here's a street scene.
We just felt for a, a flow for moving in and out of a building, you know, it, it's something I've done for 30 years. So I kinda understand how, you know, what it takes to kinda back trucks up and stuff. It made perfect sense to me as, you know, having that, that access for that use.
True, and also looking, it looks haphazard for the area either, in what other types of, it's like, oh, it definitely looks a different, quite different from that at the moment.
Yeah, this was, um, this, this was October 2019.
Where's the utility pole now in the plan?
It shows in the, between the two 24-foot.
Oh, so it's in the island?
It's, it's in the, what's gonna, what theoretically would be a landscape island, where it says pole number seven right here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at something different. Bear with me.
No, I believe you're correct, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it's right here.
Yep, okay, right there.
I mean, the, the other question, I suppose, the, the bigger issue, given the way the site works now, when you just saw in that street scene, is how do, how do we define these? Meaning, you have to create these, you have to create these curb cuts and this landscape island, because right now, this is grass that runs straight down here, until you get to your, you know, your parking area down here. So you have to, you, you have to make it so that people can't drive over the grass here and park that way, or, you know, obviously you have a landscape area here, which is, you know, which is fine. But we, we'd have to create, we'd have to create roundings here, like raised roundings, so that, so that you can delineate what is the access drive and what isn't. I suppose pavement will help to do that, but then we have to do something with this landscape island here to keep that separated. And of course, there's a, there's a telephone pole there too, so that kinda helps it a little bit. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
Where's the, is there gonna be a dumpster on site? Where is that gonna be located?
You're just gonna share the dumpster with the lot next door, Steve? Is that what the plan is?
No, so for, for right now, I mean, we can get a small, you know, one or two yard, small one or two yard dumpster on wheels, and it can get rolled off into the corner by the overhead door, out of the way.
So that's gonna have to be screened.
Yeah, so what you're saying is over here?
Fenced in and.
Okay, if that was, if that was the case, if we wanted to, if we wanted to screen it, then we would probably just say we would keep one inside then.
Roll it in the building, yeah?
Yeah, I think that would be the easiest way to do it. Probably, probably the cleanest way.
Yeah, I mean, I, part of the, I, I would appreciate that too, because part of the problem with this site is it's so small that, you know, to minimize nuisances and, and trash is one of them, you know, it would be, it, it would be preferable to keep it inside the building. I agree with Paula, if it's outside the building, you'd have to screen it, just because there's residential uses on the other side of Briar, there's residential uses diagonal on the other side of Cully, you know, it's, you just.
I think DPW made a, a prior comment, which I really concur with to a degree. So part of, and I, I do like the shrubberies, but stopping it where the pavement ends, almost, right about there towards, on the western side, and putting it all again, more against the building?
Yeah, can you just, um, can you just kinda show me with the cursor so I can see that?
Hold on one second, I, hold on, I missed that whole comment, cause I was getting my notes ready. What, Paula, say it again?
So, see the shrubs?
So at the end of the.
So stopping them about, see where the end of the pavement is?
Yeah, going to here.
Wait, wait, I can't see, I can't see your cursor either.
Am I, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, my cursor's going there.
Oh, there it is, okay, so take that, go across, yeah, go across would be great. And then, and on the left side, don't go all the way to the end because it's impeding the site distance around the corners, so yeah, you gotta stop.
Basically, you cut it off here, where people would see any of the development, and you move those, you know, 15 or whatever, this way.
Go across the back.
10 this way.
Back of the building.
Yeah, right, I mean, it should at least go past this building. You, you have this area here, it should at least go past this building. So you take, you know, let's say two, four, six of them, and you shift, you shift them on this side to the end of the building.
It would be probably appreciate this, nothing but like tall, like overgrown, overgrowth, I think, behind where you have the Jersey barriers, the top over there, just going up Briar Street. It's like we're at a Butts Briar Street against your, back of your building.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely move, you know, move that landscape, you know, screening. You know, we can continue it, and we can stop it wherever it's appropriate. You know, if it wanted to be kinda conditioned on maybe a, maybe a visit from, maybe, you know, planning board in DPW? Just to give us like a start and stop location? Would that be an appropriate way to handle it?
Hold on one second, Steve, I'm taking notes, stuff we already covered.
Uh, we're also gonna need building elevations, which we don't have.
Did, did, do I remember seeing a picture of this building before, Steve, or, or no? Is it gonna be?
There is a chance.
Is it gonna be similar in height? Is it gonna be the same in height to this building?
Yes, correct, the doors will be smaller, so there'll be like a, if you wanna go back to the site plan there. Um, so the overhead doors, correct, right there. The overhead doors are probably gonna be like 10 by 12, so 10 feet wide, 12 feet tall. And the ones on the next building to the right are 12 by 14s, okay? So, you know, substantially smaller to keep in context with the building. That'll keep, you know, any kinda larger, any kind of a larger use, you know, out of that to start with.
Does the building height step down too?
Yes, I would say we'll probably do like a, probably an eve height of like 16 feet, which is pretty standard for a shop space.
We have a people door next to the two, is it two, two bays, what, like eight feet?
Yes, correct, yep, there's one, we have one that's facing Cully Street, and one, we showed it on the, the rear of the building, where the four parking spaces are for the other lot. But we can, we can move those to, you know, both be towards Cully Street or, you know, whatever works.
Oh, I was just asking whether or not where the people door was, relationship to the parking and access.
Yep, so, yeah, can, can you pull the site plan up larger?
Yep.
It, it shows them both on there. So the.
Okay.
So, yeah, right in the, the front left-hand corner of the building.
Yep.
There's a, a mandor that faces Cully Street, and then the other one is on the right-hand side of the building that faces the next building.
This one right here.
And those can be moved, those were just put on a plan to be shown there.
Cause you don't even have a walkway on your lot for it. The building's so, you know, taking up the width.
Right, and we, we could address that with a, you know, a sidewalk or something on the front of the building.
Well, how do you do that? Cause you don't have enough, you have to make the building shorter.
No, we could just, you know, put a sidewalk, you know, in the, in the right of way.
That's what I'm saying, you have to now work in the right, okay, work right of way to put a sidewalk in. You're gonna put the sidewalk in the length of the building?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what, if that's what the board wanted, we could do that.
I think it's unnecessary.
They could just move the people door to the.
Well, my.
And then you don't, then you're accessing it just from the driveway, from the driveway, you're not accessing it from Cully Street.
Okay.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, that's, I, I think that that's not.
See what I'm trying to say?
So you can move it next to the lower overhead door, have one on the front, one on the rear. The one on the rear would be emergency anyway. It's not like people would be coming and going from that, so that doesn't really matter.
What overhead door in the rear? There's only two.
So you take this and you move it here.
Yes, correct.
Mm-hmm.
And you leave this one where it is, this is a rear door.
Which one?
This one, right side.
I can't see. There's a door, oh, there's a people door there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going.
But that one, but, but again, it's like an emergency access. If they walk out on the grass, it's not really that big a deal.
Well, it's to the other properties, not on the public side too.
Right, exactly, yeah, you could, you could theoretically put pavement connecting that other pavement in parking lot if you wanted.
Yeah.
But my point was, that one's not a big deal.
You might think about that when you move the property line.
So move mandor on Cully to front.
The overhead door side?
Yeah, to overhead door side.
Yep, I've got a, I've got a note for that.
Yeah, that's alright, I'm making all these, it'll be part of the, part of where we go.
Excuse me.
Landscaping.
So we'll, so we'll, there'll have to be some sort of, like I said, they'll, you'll have to talk to DPW too, because they're gonna require the contractor to be bonded to work within the public way, because all this works within the public way.
We don't have, the site plan, we need modified, and you also need a utility site plan with this to show where the connections are gonna go.
Mm-hmm. Are there, are there any utility connections other than electric?
You just see, well, you see proposed water and sewer right there, so it is something.
You're gonna connect water and sewer to this building, Steve?
Yes, correct, there'll be a, at least a half bathroom, no, no more than a half bathroom in there.
That there.
Half bathroom and maybe a shop sink, and then whatever's required under the building code. So we'll have a water and a sewer connection, and likely we'll have a gas connection as well, which, um, just general knowledge, the gas line will come in from the Briar Street side.
Well, so the reason why we said that is, uh, deep, uh, engineering has asked that when we approve site plans like this, that they show the utility connection locations. So you're, the utility connection plan, which you usually present to them, that it's part of the site plan, cause the site plan is what gets saved. So they like to see them on site plans. So, you know, you could show where, like, obviously, the arrow for proposed water, I assume it's in that particular, that, that rough location, but they like to see where the water, sewer, gas, electrical connections are gonna be made.
Yep, correct, so we can, we can add a gas connection. You know, we can add the, a line for the gas connection on there as well.
Yeah. Oh, I see, oh, I do see, I'm sorry. I see the water and sewer now, I'm sorry. I was looking at proposed water, proposed sewer, I didn't see the actual water line, sewer line, okay.
So that is actually there.
Yep, that's, 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 that's fine. I don't even know if they require the gas, but if they do, then certainly, um, you know, that, it'd be nice to have it in there. Probably need, like I said, we'll need some sort of, like, I don't know, berm in landscaping around pole seven. I mean, if we're gonna do this, it's, it's, it's gonna be.
I've already got that as a note.
It can be just grass, it can be mulch and, you know, low-lying plantings. It's just, it's the type of thing where it's the only real chance, other than those arborvities on the top, it's the only real chance that, that, that we get to really beautify any point. We're taking a very, the very limited area of grass we have in that neighborhood and getting rid of it. So if we could do just a tiny landscape island, that would be great, and then the permit condition would just be that you maintain it.
Understood.
Cause you'll.
And we can do something, we can, I, sorry, go ahead.
So I would just say, we need DPW permission for, cause it's gonna be work in the public way.
Right.
Do you want us to get a curb cut permit?
You will, for the driveways, absolutely.
The DPW would require that.
Even though there's no curb, you have to create, you have to get, pull a permit.
Yep.
To create.
No, yeah, we can, we can definitely, that's, it'd be a, it's standard practice.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I, I would request in the interim, if you could mow the grass on that peninsula, at least down by the, the corner, the turn where it's really high.
Yes, we can take care of that for you.
What is the red unit that's presently on the site next to the shed?
That is a soil screener, loam screener. Takes, takes the big rocks out of the pile of dirt.
Okay.
Makes clean dirt.
Are you proposing to have any outside storage?
No.
Okay.
That is obviously one of the primary concerns, anytime we do trade buildings, is that, you know, construction materials and everything stay within the building.
So is it gonna be similar color to the other building that's there? The tan or?
Yes, correct, I think it, yeah, it, it kinda keeps in some continuity with the, the street and the, that little area too. So yes, color would stay similar.
Any windows?
No, nothing proposed. And that's just strictly a security issue.
Yep. So it's pretty much gonna be, well, as you're proposing it here, I'm just, it's actually gonna come out further out than your existing building. So if we looked at that shot of the other building from the street, it's actually gonna be closest to the street, like, yeah, that one. So if you looked at that.
And then you look at this, yeah, it steps, it's maybe steps down two or three feet closer than that building?
Correct. Correct, I think if you were to, it's probably three feet.
I used to have.
And if I can just, for the, the reason for that is a 30-foot wide building is kind of a, it's, it's a constructible roof system. So that's, that's the reason for the 30 feet. It makes the overhead doors work, it makes for a good shop layout.
Okay.
And then the only reason for the skewed line, like the skewed line for the back wall, is simply just to follow the property line, and you pick up a few more square feet inside the building for a bathroom or, you know, storage racks and that kinda stuff.
And as Paula mentioned, it would be like maintaining landscaping in the right of way that's being proposed. And update the lot line from the A and R from the adjoining parcel.
So I did have one question.
You could also stripe those too when you, after you do that.
Yeah, I had another question. So the, the top of this plan, on the top right, it says res be commercial automotive. We don't have commercial automotive anymore as a zoning district. We have, I'm just looking at the, we have commercial, commercial recreation, neighborhood business, in-town business, downtown business. Res ABC rural.
It used to be.
Right, no, I know. What I'm saying is...
It was from 2009.
That's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the plan needs to be revised to show the correct district. That's where I'm going with that. It, it would, it would not be appropriate for us to sign a site plan that has the wrong zoning determination on it, or the wrong zoning district on it.
Understood. I think that those all can be addressed on, on a final plan.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, aside from the stuff we talked about, which, I can go over them too, Steve, if you want, you know, kinda the summary. Or you can just re-watch the meeting later. Um, the stuff we mentioned that needs to change. But the, the one thing that, that, that I want expressly written on this plan is how we're gonna handle the curb cuts. Whether, I mean, they're within the right of way, so they might have to be vertical granite. I, I don't, I don't know, it, it would be tough for us to say that asphalt will be okay there, especially because I don't think it would survive plowing and everything else. So then if you do that, you almost have to, you have to step up the, uh, the grade a couple inches to meet that, that granite on the grass side. So on the left-hand side, hold on, let me get my cursor back. On the left-hand side over here, you just have to meet it up to the top of that four-inch vertical granite on this side and on this side, so that you have a defined entryway, entry point. You know, if this was all on your site, I would say asphalt, but given that you're working within the public way, I think it has to be granite.
We can confirm with DPW that, we can do that. If you can talk with DPW before then.
I'll, I'll make, what I'll do is this, if it's, if this is a, you know, a prudent move, I have no problem sitting with, you know, with the DPW coordinator and going through all this and get a, get a final list for you ahead of time.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea. I mean, like I said, we'll, we, we obviously, we defer to them for work with, especially to work within the public way. So the, you know, all of these sections that are hashed here, I mean, this pavement and whatever we have to do, you know, in this landscape island and then these, these two curb cuts, obviously, I'd like this one to match this one if we're doing two on both sides. So you can have a nice-looking, you know, access point into there. And then, you know, if they want, you know, just to redo the grass after you disturb it on this side, and, I mean, right now, this is probably pavement, isn't it, in front of the building? Um, well, let me put the street scene up again.
No, that's, that's grass right now.
Oh, okay, yep. Yep.
And if, I would really consider reducing the 24-foot widths each one, 12, 14, something that's more reasonable. Why do you need 20, 24 for, you know, 48 inches of curbing? I don't know.
How about this? Oh, yeah. I was gonna say, the problem is, I was gonna say, how about you make one a little bit wider and get rid of the other one, but the problem is, this parking space can't really get pushed too far. And, and the pole gets in your way here. So, and I mean, you would think 24 would be plenty of room to, you know, to, to pull in, do a turn and get into there. This, uh, this space is a little tougher, especially if someone's parked there, to get in there. I mean, either way, either way, if you pull in, you'd think you could back up, get there relatively, relatively easily. Maybe just leave it at, just consider it.
Yeah, that's why I said just, whether or not it could be possible.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not possible, then we'll, you know, we'll cross that bridge, but see what you can do. Cause I agree with Paula. It, it 20, 24-foot entrances is definitely overkill, considering this site is so small. Like, this plan doesn't even do it justice how small this site is. It's so small.
As we're taking, we're making it a lot of impervious area here. Between the building, adding the building and the parking lot for just like two spots.
Understood. I, I'll definitely, let me, if it's, if like I said, if it's prudent, I'll, I'll review all this with DPW. And we'll see if we can come, come up with a, you know, some modifications and some adjustments that work better.
Yeah, so I mean, at, at a minimum, you know, like I said, those, I assume, although I didn't see anywhere it mentioned, I assume there are arborvities on that four-foot wide landscaping area to the rear. Um, you know, like I said, move some away from the, from the, uh, intersection of Briar and Cully. Move them down to, to the, till they go to the end of the building. Um, and then all, you know, the other stuff we talked about. I think, you know, it's definitely doable. It's, it's much better than, than when we don't last, especially not backing out onto the street and the overhead door locations and everything else.
How flat is it going out? Like if you, if you pulled in straight, you couldn't pull out straight to Briar Street?
Would you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If you pulled in straight, you couldn't pull out straight to Briar Street?
If you pulled in...
And like from Cully Street to go straight across? I'm not sure of the grade. I can't remember.
Oh, it's, oh, it's pretty flat. Um...
With the walls on the other part.
Yeah, let, let me pull up.
Well, the wall, well, it starts to dissipate after you get up to the building, so it's kinda like, is it pretty flat there now? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's maybe, what, a foot or two grade change from front to rear side, if that...
Yeah, I'd say probably, probably it's two feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two feet where the building is.
Is the view from Briar.
Yeah, so this is like, think about, okay, so, and then where are you gonna be putting the, like, say where the shed is, where the building is, what's it right across the street from the shed? Like, on the resident side, is it? Okay.
That would be with my back to that shed.
Yep.
And the shed's basically in the middle of the built, proposed building. I would have significantly more concerns if it was automotive related.
Yeah. Okay. See, with the landscaping buffer on the other side for the other, you know, kinda puts a little bit better buffer for the residential aspect.
So do you think, Steve, when, when you, when you're able to, um, you know, make the revisions to the plan, and like I said, make sure you, the plan shows what the current zoning determination, zoning district is for that. When, when you do all that sort of stuff, do you think you could provide us with an elevation of the proposed building?
Yes.
Great.
And you, wait, and this is also, this is not a hearing, but I wanna, we have a lot of members that are virtual. Do you have any comments or concerns or questions or things that you wanna see?
I've got a couple of comments, Paula.
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, the one thing that I'm concerned about, uh, of course, is the size of the lot and the appearance of the lot to neighbors. And I know that we, the board talked about no construction materials stored outside, but does that include dump trucks?
So there's only...
Do all the dump trucks be put in the garage?
Steve, can you answer that? You only have parking, you only have two parking spaces on lots, so technically, you can only park two vehicles on a lot.
Correct. So I would say this, because it's a, it's a business district, I think having whatever vehicle would be used for the trade or for the allowable use could be parked outside. So I think, yeah, I mean, you could have, you could have a service van, you could, you could, you could have a pickup truck, you could have a dump truck, you could have a box truck. Um, you could have a variety of vehicles. Um, I think the biggest thing is having registered vehicles that are not a nuisance.
Correct. So there could be, there could be at any time and left on the lot, two dump trucks in each park, one in each parking space.
There could be two of any kind of vehicle, yes, cause there's two parking spots.
There could be two dump trucks. Is that correct, Steve? There could be two dump trucks left overnight on the lot?
Yes. Is there, is there a, the differentiation between, say, a dump truck and another kind of a vehicle that is...
I'm just, I'm stri, I'm strictly talking about the, right now, there's, it's a nice grassy area. I'm sure the neighbors are not too concerned about it because it's rather pleasant to look at. And, uh, it's gonna be changed overnight into something that they're not used to. And I did see one particular slide, uh, that was presented a little while back with a dump truck on the lot. And I would much rather be looking at a grassy area than a dump truck. And I don't know if you can go back to that slide?
I'm trying to find the picture again. Um, I, I can't, I thought it was one of the street scene photos, but, um...
No, I think it was this and then right there.
It was what?
Right there.
On the other, I think he's talking about on the other side of the fence.
Oh, over here? No, there was, no, I know what Peter's talking about. At one point, I had a slide up that had an orange dump truck that looked like it was
Oh, it was old.
Out of use. Um, and I'm trying to remember where I had that picture from. Um...
No, actually, actually, prior to when I owned the lot.
Okay.
That was under the prior ownership.
Oh, I see where the fence, stockade fence was.
Oh, you know, you know what I bet it was?
Where the property line is.
Whoops, sorry, wrong button.
So we purchased it from the owner of 56, 56 Cully Street. The old repair shop that was across the street from us. So some of those pictures are...
Sorry.
Some of the pictures that you were looking at were from previous ownership.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I quite honestly...
I'm just trying to get...
Yeah, I don't even remember where.
I'm just trying to get it clear in my own mind. Uh, when, when it was talked about no construction materials, uh, or equipment stored outside, I just wanted to make it clear that it could possibly be a couple of dump trucks.
Right, and I, Peter, can I, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Like a, I'll say a normal size, like a, like a regular landscape-sized dump truck versus a, like a large 10-wheeler or a six-wheeler kinda truck? Is there a difference in your mind between those two?
No, no, there isn't.
Okay.
You know, any kind, any kind of large construction vehicle, even if it's a normal-sized dump truck, I'm sure the, the neighbors would rather be looking at a, a nice grassy area. So that's, that's just my take on it. And, uh, there's two parking spaces there. All I'm stating is there could possibly be two dump trucks left on that lot, one in each space. So that's, that's my point there.
Can I make a, maybe a suggestion for you that you can add in?
Sure.
So, and only, this is coming from experience. So vehicles are all based on their gross vehicle weight. And a non-commercial driver's license vehicle is under 26,000 pounds, okay? Which is most of what you would see for like landscaping-sized trucks, you know, just as, as a, a way for people to understand that. So we, we, I have no problem putting a restriction in there for, you know, no vehicles over the, you know, 26,000-pound gross vehicle weight rating, which would be that truck right there.
There we go.
That truck right there, that's from a former owner. Um, but that truck would be over that weight rating. So that would, that, like, the way I, I would suggest that, we could put a stipulation in there that prevents a truck of that size from being there by the gross vehicle weight rating.
Okay, that's well-taken. The second point I have is, you know, I, I know that the, again, the lot is small. Uh, the cutouts for the driveways coming in are large, so I appreciate the fact you're gonna do as much landscaping and greenery as you possibly can around there. And, and, and the third point that I have is, I have mixed feelings about, about, uh, just simply stating that the dumpster is gonna go inside. A dumpster inside, you know, might turn into a dumpster outside. Especially when a dumpster, uh, you know, gets in the way of things. So I'm not sure how the board feels about the idea of just simply saying, you know, let's keep the dumpster inside when it could be an issue down the road, dragged outside, left outside, well, it's gonna be picked up tomorrow, it's gonna be picked up Friday, and it's outside for extended periods of time. So those are a couple of other thoughts I have on the dumpster.
So, so I agree with you, Peter, and, and I, the note I wrote about the trash in building, and if and when we get to, you know, we get the revised site plan and we get, um, to the point of voting, one of the conditions I would have in the written decision would be trash in the building. And if trash is ever to be located outside of the building in the future, that it has to be shown, uh, on the plan and properly screened.
Sounds good.
So, and I'll mention this too, in the zoning ordinance, there's landscaping requirements for property lines that are abutting, um, non-residential districts. Residential district is 181-543, shall be screened from non-residential uses by means of plantings or maintenance of trees of a species already for the area appropriate for screening, spaced to minimize visual intrusion, and providing an opaque year-round visual buffer between uses. Planting shall be provided and maintained by the owner of the property, used for non-residential purposes. Buffer area may contain walk, sewage wells, but no part of any building structure or paved space intended for a used parking area may be located within the buffer. Planted buffer areas along property lines with residential districts shall be of the following minimum depth in each district, which may be reduced by special permit issued by the planning board upon finding reduction will not detract from the objections of this section. With NB, it's 10 feet. You'll also be seeking a, of, uh, a waiver for street frontage for non-residential uses. A landscape buffer area except, um, for approved accessways, at least 20 feet in width as measured from the layout of the roadway. Providing frontage shall be established. The buffer area shall be planted with grass, medium height, shrubs, trees, at least every 35 feet along the road frontage. So that's 20 feet in depth. So just saying, you'd be requesting a reduction for that too. For waivers.
Sorry, I muted the broadcast for a minute by mistake.
What's that?
You're good. I muted the broadcast for a minute by mistake. There was background noise, and I was trying to mute someone.
Nothing I read?
I was trying to mute, no, no, I think you're okay. I was trying to mute one of the attendees and I pressed the wrong button.
Okay, so those, so that was section 181-543 and section 181-544, which would be looking, uh, the applicant should be looking for some waivers to reduce those setbacks. It can't possibly be met with this configuration. Um, and then to the degree it can, it can be met, like with the, um, evergreens along the backside to help buffer on the residential, from the non-residential, that's good.
I think that we would probably, for future transfers of the property, we would, it would probably be also appropriate, not only appropriate, in, necessary for us, one of the conditions to be that because of the parking that's provided, it, it is not to be used for automotive uses or, you know, commercial automotive or any, any of the uses that, that tend to be a problem in that neighborhood because we're only approving the amount of parking that's allowed for building trade shops, so, or warehouse, whatever it's called, whatever the technical requirement is for the two spaces.
Okay. And we may... All right. I'm just double-checking, but I believe that the board can waive that through a minor site plan and not just through a special permit underneath the minor site plan provision, so, those two. As a matter of procedure. But those would be waivers that would have to be, uh, just acknowledged. Yeah, from the board. Any other questions or feedbacks? Any board members? Okay.
I, I think we covered everything. I...
Steve, do you have any questions that are gonna come back with the revised site plan and elevations?
No, I, I, um, I kinda find myself in agreement with you on everything here, so, you know, I'm more than happy to bring back a revised plan. I can even submit one ahead of time, just to make sure we have everything covered.
Yep.
It's always a good idea.
Can do. Okay, if everything, if you're all squared with that, we can vote to continue.
Uh, since this is a minor, are we okay with timeframes? Do we need a signature for any extension or anything?
Um, I think we're okay for...
90 days?
We're good for 90 days.
Make a motion to continue to our September meeting.
Second. A motion's been made with a second to continue to our September, is the September fine for you, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
October, okay, September meeting. And we'll take a roll call vote. Those in agreement, say aye. Amanda?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right.
And Steve, if you, if you aren't, if you aren't certain of any of the things we talked about tonight, within the next few days, it'll be put up online. You can go to the FATV website and re-watch if you wanna make sure you've got everything.
Also, when our September meeting, Chantel, is?
September 17th.
September 17th, so it's changed next month.
And at the end of the meeting, we can talk a little more about that.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Just want to advocate now.
Thanks, Steve.
All right.
Thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome. You're welcome. We are now into, and we'll see you, we'll see you soon, our.
Yes.
Public hearing. And actually, maybe we just do that, actually, I'm going to do that right now, too, with, I'm just going to take it out of order. We'll do special permanent site plan review modification for the 218-12, Steve Senay requesting extension for buildup for PUD located at zero Meadowbrook Road, assessors map 139, Proso 1A, in residential RA District.
Meadowbrook Lane for the.
Meadowbrook Lane.
For the record.
Take care of that right now.
All right, let me, um.
Special permit modification.
Paula, is there something on the screen that you think might be helpful for this? That maybe just the site plan? I mean, the, yeah. Hold on. Document Center.
Well, I was, for the submission, I was asking for, from the applicant, Mr. Senay, what is the extension that's being requested?
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, just a two-year extension for completion.
Okay.
Till, when is that date?
So two years from now?
Be from.
See when the deadline, that's why I'm like.
Oh, oh, I can, I can pull it up. I have it right here. So the original permit expired, October twelfth, is going to expire October twelfth, 2024.
Okay.
That's the thirty-sixth month from the original approval in '21.
Is it on the decision?
That's on the decision.
Okay, so two years from that date.
From October twelfth, 2024 would be the date of the decision, yep.
What if we, wouldn't we do, let's do the end of October of that month.
Yes, good call.
Like October 31st?
Good call. Always after a meeting.
Not in the middle of the month.
Yes.
So October 31st.
2026.
2026.
Thank you.
The other aspect was, and we were trying to get some additional information, there was been updates to the stormwater aspect, so if there was any changes to detention basins or site plan that needs to be, is there also seeking modification due to the third-party review?
Those were, sorry, is that for me?
Yes, I was looking for an explanation because it's like there was something provided, but I don't know if there's any changes, like what's being requested to change, if anything.
So there were, sorry.
Go ahead.
I still with you? Okay. Yeah, so not really anything major changed with the peer review that was done.
I think since the, as, as long as nothing was required, and I think we, Chantel, correct me if I'm wrong, engineering was satisfied with the response, correct? It's, I think I saw Ryan's email.
Yeah, as far as I know, they were satisfied with the response from Whitman and Bigum.
So I think even though there might have been changes, since the way it was worded was that he was responding to the third-party review, it all, I think, should be encapsulated in that third-party review and their response to it. So as long as we keep those with our permit, then we should, in my personal opinion, I think we should be okay. I didn't hear otherwise from any.
You didn't have to change the layout of anything, Steve? Of the.
So the only thing from, so if you, if you scroll, scrolled down just a little bit, so a stormwater line, so that's the, the black and white dash one there.
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Yep, so instead of going just ninety degrees straight down into the stormwater main, across Canton Street. So it originally came down kind of between the water and sewer line.
So it came down this way?
That's where it came originally. So if you follow it from, kind of pick a point and I'll go with you. Yep. So keep going down if you can, follow that line down. So we relocated the line heading in this direction, and that'll intersect to a new drain manhole, down about a little bit more with the cursor, up one structure from that.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah, go up one.
I can't see what you guys can see. Apparently there's a delay on this, so I'm trying to look up on the screen, but. So, so I see, I see what looks like manhole here, manhole here, and then this is the water.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, correct. So what it is, there's an existing connection into that thirty-six-inch stormwater main.
Yep.
So what we're going to do is we're going to upgrade that line for the city. We're going to add a drain manhole. We're going to add a catch basin in Canton Street as part, so replace a whole manhole, an old manhole.
Hmm.
But, sorry, replace an old catch basin, add a drain manhole, and, and then run our line in that way. So we're using an existing connection. So that's the only, that's the only change on the plan that I'm aware of.
Hey, Steve, do you, do you know, and it, it's okay if you don't, because this isn't maybe a fair question, but do you know, did they do sewer separation in Canton Street yet? That's okay, that's okay. Again, I didn't mean to put that on you, I just didn't know if you knew off the top of your head.
I don't think that they have.
Okay, and I only ask because, and I assume that whatever they have you do here will be made so that it's, when they get to sewer separation, it won't get in the way of that. That's the only reason why I say that. But I'm sure DPW, I assume they already looked at this.
Yeah, so to that point, so the drain manhole, so you see those two structures that are together on Canton Street?
Yep.
One is a catch basin, and then one is a drain manhole. So catch basins collect the water with, you know, the grate on top. They have a sump inside for collecting sand and sediment. And the drain manhole is just kind of the, kind of the pipe that connects into the, the stormwater system. So if they did a sewer, a sewer and stormwater separation, they could utilize that drain manhole, you know, very easily as a new structure.
This, this is just, this point, is my cursor up near the detention basin?
Yes.
This, this, this is just an overflow anyway, right? If the detention basin.
Yes, correct.
High. So, so this is just the overflow to protect it going south into any of the neighbors' properties. So, so that's kind of a secondary protection to make sure water doesn't run off onto the neighbor's property. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
What if it's looked at as a, when we do this extension modification of incorporating any of the changes from the third-party review aspect?
It's, it's a clean way to do it. We can do that. I mean, we've got to draft, we've got to draft a permit for the extension anyway.
Yeah.
You just say, you know, in, in conjunction with extending the timeframe to a year, we're incorporating the changes that are made, shown on this new, whatever the date is on these plans.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I, I think that, I think that's a good idea. I, I honestly, it wasn't in my head that we were going to draft the decision anyway, and then I realized we got to draft the decision for an extension of time, so.
And just, just for, just for, so everybody knows, we currently still own number four sixty Canton Street?
Yep.
Okay, so that, that stormwater easement that we're going to create, you know, with the blue hashed lines on the, around the stormline, stormline, you know, we'll take care of that in a, in a legal document.
I was going to say, so you probably should just have a note on the decision, Paula, that proper easements for the crossing over house number four, four sixty for the drainage line, for the stormwater drainage line.
You said four sixty-four?
Four sixty.
Four sixty?
Four six zero, yep.
Four sixty Canton Street.
Yep. That way it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, I'm sure. Steve owns it, but that way, if for whatever reason, properties change hands, the easement can, will be part of the decision. Aside from that, Steve, were there any other significant changes?
No.
Okay. And, and just, I, I know the answer to this, but I'm just going to ask because there's neighbors here. No changes to roadway, unit counts, unit designs, all the stuff that was part of the original approval is still carrying over, correct?
Yes, correct. Exactly the same as was before. The, the plan that you see just shows just the, the stormwater line to that, you know, existing pathway into the stormwater system. And, you know, if there were any modifications that the peer review wanted, they're, they're on here, but I don't think there was anything of any significance.
I don't know, I, I don't know if it was included in our original decision, but I'm just going to mention it now in the event that it wasn't, because it's been, Nick and Jeff have mentioned it to me so many times in the past, that the operation and maintenance plan for the drainage system be recorded in the registry of deeds. If that didn't make the last permit, it should make this one. Yeah, that, that way the detention basins get maintained, and we, we don't have issues long-term for, for that.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
This is kind of going from memory, but there's, with our stormwater prevention, with our stormwater permit that was already issued, the, the documentation for that, I know there's at least two, two documents that are, one's like two hundred and fifty pages long, to meet like state and federal requirements. And the other one I thought was, and it, what I'm getting to is, the other one is like a hundred and fifty pages long, or some, some amount, like it's, it's substantial size document.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if the, the O and M plan is that lengthy. So recording, you know, fifty or a hundred pages at the registry. I'd like to find a way to.
It shouldn't be that lengthy. We've, we've seen O and M plans for developments much larger than this, and they're not anywhere near that lengthy, but I don't know. That, that is.
It's at least maybe draft the crux of it, of where it's located and how it's to be maintained and a schedule.
I mean, you can ask, ask, you can ask DPW and engineering, too, because this has been, and I won't even say recent, within the last couple of years, that, that, that they've said they have to be recorded because that's the only way that, that they can check in on, you know, what's required, and, and, and there's public notice of, this is what's required of this project and the property owners and everything else. You know, if these theoretically, these are condo units, so the association ultimately is going to have to take control over the maintenance of that detention basin and the, and the stormwater infrastructure. So there need, that plan needs to be readily available. So that, that's why that was, that's why that's been a, a thing. So, I mean, you can ask them what's required. I don't, as long as they're satisfied, I don't care. But that's been, that's been a request of them for the last few years.
Understood. I'll, I'll make that happen. That's, I know it's a solvable problem.
You, you can ask, ask them what the expectations are for the manual. This is a public hearing, so any board members have any questions on what's been discussed so far, or has any questions not discussed so far? And then anybody in the audience who's here about Meadowbrook Lane that has any questions?
Or comments.
Or comments.
Anything you.
Questions or comments?
Yep.
Okay. Nobody physically, anybody virtually? Yes?
Just, just do me a favor. You got to either sit at the table or come up to there so the people at virtual can hear you. Otherwise, no, otherwise our board members can't hear you.
You just have to come to the podium. You don't ask, okay.
Well, I want you to speak.
Good question or comment?
Tell you what, you say your question, I'll reiterate it. Go ahead.
I'm just curious about the construction going on. That, when is that fence going up? On the backside of the progress.
So the question is, when is the fence going up on the backside of, and you're. Victoria Heinz, so you're directly south of the project, to the left of four sixty, that's four seventy-eight. So Steve, there's a fence going up there, I guess? Yep, proposed privacy fence is shown on the plan. Her question is, when, when in the order of construction does her fence go up?
Okay, so we would want to have the stormwater line installed, and the backside of the basin that would abut four seventy-eight, we would want to have that grading done, so that we could establish the line for the fence. So it would be installation of the stormwater line, and probably because of the disturbance on there would be the water and sewer lines at least up to the detention basin, which would be at the back corner of, of their lot, the back right-hand corner of their lot. And then, like I said, then the grading on the backside of the lot, once the grading on the backside of, of their lot of four seventy-eight is done, we have no problem installing a fence at that time.
I, am, is it safe to say that the, the drainage infrastructure is the first thing you're going to do for site work?
Yes, correct.
So is it also safe to say that within the first two to three months of site work, you should be able to put the fence up?
Yes.
That, that okay?
Yes, so as soon as we, as soon as we, and we already have, for, kind of for some context, we have our road opening permits, we have our, we have our stormwater permit. We are waiting on this to kind of move forward with, you know, getting those connections pulled across Canton Street.
Have you done the erosion control barriers yet?
Uh, no, not yet.
Because that, because that'll be before site work, right?
Yes, correct.
So the erosion control barriers, which are the, the straw waddles that they'll put down, or whatever they're going to put down there, to protect as much soap from running off as possible, that'll hopefully protect you. And then if you have questions as this thing goes on, you contact the planning department, community development, or principal planner, Chantel.
And have you, Steve and Victoria spoken with each other regarding what type of fence? Okay, because all this is.
Do you have something in mind?
Do you have something in mind you'd like to see? Usually.
I think it was, I think that was spelled out originally.
Usually it's a white vinyl fence.
Correct.
Yeah. The board generally likes vinyl because it is more aesthetically appealing.
And longer lasting than.
We find cedar, cedar and stuff like that just wears and doesn't look good. Did you guys have any other questions? Okay, okay.
Glad we can have your question answered. Does anybody else have any questions? We can ask the question for you.
Mm-hmm.
If you're not comfortable asking it. Okay. Anybody else virtually?
There.
Can't see any.
Were no hands raised a minute ago. Let me check again.
Okay.
No hands raised.
All right, that being said, do we have any more DPW comments on this modification, or?
I did not receive DPW comments.
Okay, other than that they reviewed the third party and thought.
Let me, I can probably, if you bear with, oh, hold on, I, I got to pause my screen here because I'm going to go through emails. I can probably pull up, I'm positive I have Ryan's email. Give me one second. Steve, while I'm doing this, were there any, are there any other changes, you know, that you can think of, either major or minor, anything that we can incorporate into this decision, since we're doing one anyway for the extension of time? Because if you find out things after the fact, we have to go through the whole process again. So I, I don't know if there's anything that comes to mind that, that, hopefully there isn't, but I'm just trying to put, put it in front of you in case there is.
No, I, I actually think we've got everything, everything covered.
Okay.
Okay.
And then bear with me for one second, Paula. I, I know this email.
What's the projected timeline for the project? Is it, well, two years now, I guess.
Well, in, in January, I had a, a different schedule, so, yeah. So like, I, we're, we're looking to kind of get our utility lines off the street this year, and kind of make progress on site work, you know, through the fall and winter, and hope to be under, you know, building construction, that part of it by, you know, by late spring.
What's the projected, like, the size of these units?
Same as they were before.
I know.
Oh, like square, sorry, square footage?
I don't recall, it's been a while, so just for everybody's audience, you know, pleasure, like what, the type of housing you're developing again is, you know, what's going to benefit the community here? We're going to have some additional housing, and what's it going to be like? This is your plug.
Yep, so there'll be about a thousand square foot units. Some will be a little bit bigger than that. Two-bedroom, bath and a half, garages, townhouse style for most of them. And then we'll have probably four, at least four, possibly, possibly six that'll have first floor, first floor master bedrooms, you know, for, you know, kind of an over, over, whatever age is appropriate to say. You know, that want a first four-bedroom.
And, and if memory serves, there were like four single-story?
That's what he's saying. He said four, at least six.
Oh, four, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
Maybe six would be.
Yeah, there's four, four on the, on the bottom side of the, the development.
Yep.
And then if we can, the last one on the cul-de-sac, if it works out that we can make the grading work, then that one will be, probably follow in kind with the single-level units.
Yeah, I can see those being sought after.
Really, a thousand, a thousand square feet, Steve? That, what was fifth mass, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen?
Yeah, those were like fourteen, fourteen to fifteen hundred.
Okay. I did find, I did find Ryan's email, just, he wrote, "Hi everyone, we received the remaining required stormwater docks to satisfy the requirements for our stormwater permit, as well as responses to the peer review comments from tie and bond and a revised set of plans." That was Ryan Colleen's, our engineer, the. That was Ryan Colleen's, our engineer, his notes.
All right. Didn't get there. All right. Does the board have enough information to, um, make a decision?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor say a-
Hold on, we need a second.
What?
We need a second.
Second. In a second, thank you. And all those opposed, say opposed, and we'll take roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right. Deliberation, discussion?
Unless you want to take board comment, I'm ready to-
That'd been, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit site plan modification to 218-12, zero Meadow Brook Lane, subject to extending the date of completion to October 31st, 2026. Incorporating the revised plan set, which I don't have a date, but if you wait one second, I can find it. Dated, I'm going to move all these things. Uh, 6324 with the revisions to the peer review comments. And who's one other thing? Oh, the, uh, to, to provide, uh, when applicable, the easement over 460 Canton Street.
And record the O and M if not-
Record the O and M plan. Yep.
Not already a condition?
If it, if it has, yeah, right. If it wasn't already a condition.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion's made with a second, thank you. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate all the help.
You're welcome. Good night, good evening. We do have also a special permit and site plan review for AG Greenflip, which was proposing to build a multifamily PUD of nine units. This was on Fairmont Street, which has requested a continuance until our September meeting?
That is correct. They're still working with the Conservation Commission.
Good. Okay. So that is before us.
Was that already opened? Yes, yes, it was. Make a motion to continue to our September meeting.
Second. Motion's been made with a second to continue to our September meeting. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, and roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. So continued, let's see, zero Fairmont. All right. Our next public hearing this evening. Site plan review modification. Applicant Mark Klinger, GGC Group LLC requesting modification of approved site plan dated 4622, I'm not sure about that, for a multifamily residential use of 16 units located at 50 Frankwood Street in the RB district.
Yep, and I have a hand raised. Robert, I unmuted you.
Hi, my name is Robert Hansel. I appear for the applicant. Mark Klinger is here. We have two matters on. Mark is looking for modification of the site plan. I have been working on the condominium documents. You have a letter from town council saying that they do not have any issues. I just wanted to make sure that that was actually the case. So I, I don't know if you want to address the condominium documents first for Mr. Klinger.
Well, as we're trying to talk about condominium docs, we just got, because there's a modify, site plan modification before us with this, they advised not to sign off on the condo docs until that modification has been completed. Because it needs to be part of the condo docs and you're seeking a site plan modification. So it's going to push that back.
So, so let me pull up just before we get-
As a matter of procedure.
Before we get too far into it, to Paula's point, to what she's talking about, and I'm, and I know you guys know this because I read your letter, we, we obviously, we found in reading your letter and doing research that the actual site with the as-built that New England Engineering did and what's ultimately there is obviously different from the site plan that we approved. And because we approved the site plan, we need the, what's actually built to be shown on the site plan. So I don't know if you want to go over them individually, Paula?
Not even just what's actually built, it's what actually we're going to approve as a modification.
Okay.
So they're going to be, we will be seeking, I'll just say, after we have our discussions, a revised site plan. And not just a plot plan, but a site plan by the engineering company who did it originally, an updated plan with all the dimensions and everything for the parking and the layout and utilities and all on that, so that it can be in and out will be also, you know, part of the record for that. After we have a discussion, because you also asked for a number of requests and changing conditions, so we'll also go through that too.
Yeah.
So there's a number of things to go through. We're going to be here for a little while this evening to go over this. But also take some good notes and hopefully you have an architect or someone who's going to be able to, to make these updates once, once we go through the, what we want to see in the site plan.
Okay. So these are the originals you have up? So no, so this is, so this is Kent's plan, Kent Olfeld, who you had draw the, the as-built plan? Okay. Are you Mark?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, so New England Engineering or whoever, they, they drew the, so this is his as-built plan. And what I did was, I took the notes on the plan we approved and compared them to what was actually built to try and, we're, we're trying to reconcile like what's important and what's not. I mean, some of the changes are inconsequential. Some of them matter. It's just a question of, you know, I figured we, Paul and I started making notes and as we went along, we're like, well, we might as well note as many things as we can see. And then what I think will solve the problem, like Paula said, is you provide us with a new plan by the engineering, ultimately the same engineering company, because they already did all the work, and, and just revise it to show all the actual dimensions, what was actually built. So we could just say, yes, this is what's done and go from there. The, the more glaring things that came up before we get to the sidewalk conversation and some of the other things, we noticed obviously his as-built plan, if you look at the right-hand side, and I'll try and zoom this in because you're here, it's hard to see. This area that I marked in yellow is where the telephone pole is. Yep. Obviously, the as-built show it as a parking space. It's not. There's, there's a telephone pole there, which you have, I marked it similar to what you marked off. This, this area on the north right here, Paula had mentioned, and I agree, the, the curb comes in before the end of the parking space. So what needs to happen is either this curb needs to be brought up to the length of this, this part, none of, the other thing too, none of these parking spaces show how big they are. We need to make sure that they're the right size. The, what is it, nine by 19?
Nine by 18.
Nine by 18. I, I think one of the questions that was asked of us, I had a conversation with someone else in the city was, do we know, do you, do you think that all the parking spaces meet the minimum size standard in our code, eight by 19?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So you could, so they can show that when they do them, they could show typical. And, and that one's just a concern because it comes in about, it looks like two or three feet shy of the end of the parking stall. And you don't want a car backing out into a car turning in. So you just want that curb cut kind of moved up a little bit.
Curb cut, you have to make it narrow or it's not going to be so wide at the street. So, because you have to go that length, 18-foot length minimum. You got to protect the parking space. You can't just drive into the back end of the car on the same we're seeing.
This, this one down here, down near your transformer pad, which was not on the original site plan, isn't a parking space.
No, it's, we, we actually marked it off that it's not.
Perfect.
Over there with the painted line.
Perfect, and that's fine.
Is that done yesterday? Because I was just there two, a day ago.
You'll see a, a line, a white line all the way around it. It's not going to be a spot.
Yeah, so we'll be looking for-
Oh, right here, Paula. Oh, sorry, hold on.
We'll be looking for some like hash marks.
It, it, yeah, you can just, you can just cross line, but-
Put hash marks through.
Hold on, let me go to this.
Otherwise it looks like-
This, this shows it on the new aerial.
Yeah, so you just put hash marks.
Yeah, okay.
Also-
What that turns into when people start going there is a parking space. What you want is, you know, especially because the dumpster's there, you have the dumpster, and then you don't want people parallel parking into a spot where you have people pulling out. So you just make it so it looks like it's not, that's an easy fix, just paint.
Yeah.
So before you leave that area,
Yep.
There's also on the plan, there's supposed to be an arrow marking going to the right as in going around-
Yeah, there's a, there's a, on the site plan, there's a directional arrow somewhere in here.
Maybe a little bit further up, but-
Up here?
Nope, the other way.
Oh, this way?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Because it's right past the person's driveway, the other butter's driveway, but right there should be a big arrow going-
Actually, if you bear with me right, I have it right here.
Because of the parallel park.
This is, I'll zoom in.
Yeah.
This is it right here.
Yep.
Just some, just some directional signage that basically shows people that are turning out of here aren't supposed to go back that way. They're supposed to go, traffic's supposed to go only out Fairweather Street, and these cars aren't supposed to go backwards against traffic here.
Great.
Hold on, let me get back to what I had. This one wasn't marked as a parking spot on, on the as-built plan. I suppose it can be.
I don't know.
In real life, it's a, oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
So there's the number of pace, yeah, spaces changed. So this lower parking area, we approved eight spaces and now there's six.
Which, you're talking about this one, Paula?
No, lower. We're, we're just were-
Oh, right here.
Concentrating a particular area, right?
The reason why was because of the moving of the transformer, that we had to move from the position where the lease was for the church over there. We had to move it over there because per the lease, they didn't want any structures that were immovable. Saying there, so, and Unitil had, I think actually come to the board and asked for, for that approval, I believe, to move that over.
For the transformer?
Yeah, for the transformer to be moved over there, because that was the only other place we could have done it. That they approved.
And you're also asking to move the location of the dumpster, different from the site plan? The reason why we have the dumpster there, so it wasn't against a direct butter. But there is a fence and shrubberies and-
It's, it's fenced in and right behind it is an open space. And the reason why it couldn't go up in the corner there is because it was kind of on an incline. We couldn't keep it in on an incline because then it would just roll out. It would be in the, I can't read the numbers over there.
Oh, hold on.
All the way at the bottom corner by that curb.
So that, I would just say that's a change in the site plan?
Yes.
So these are all the things that have to be, we want to see on the revised?
I mean, the site plan, the site plan-
Put it on there.
The site plan references, like, for instance, it references vertical granite curbing at the end of all the parking areas.
Yep.
It's not out there.
It's not there. So-
If, if you look at the, the site plan from, that we approved, like right here, it's written in red, right here, written in red, those all say vertical granite curbing. I don't think it's that big a deal. It's just, if we're going to approve it, it just delete it from the-
You need a curb, well, you need curb, you need not so much, probably where the guardrail is, but on the other area going to the lawn, you need a curb stop.
Yeah, we have actually a hill over there.
No, you need a curb stop. It's just completely flat to the lawn.
Hold on, I have-
You need something to stop.
I'm thinking about the wrong, which side are you talking about?
She's talking about the side on the, the side opposite the church. Uh, the, the left side of Fairwe, if you're looking at Fairweather, the right side.
Let's mention these things and then we're going to bring up the actual photographs.
Yeah, that's true, because we do have photos too. So it might be easier to go through the pictures.
I went out there, took a lot of photos. Chantel was out there, took some photos. I think it'd be helpful for everybody to see the photos, aspects. We looked and examined the, this plan versus the plan that was approved and the changes that were made and what we may or may not agree to on the changes, what going to be on the revised site plan.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask you a question? And part of this is, I want to, there's issues with this as-built plan. What, it is what it is. It's, it's inconsequential because the as-built plan isn't what we approved and it's not what we're going to approve. But how many total parking spaces do you have on both sites?
I believe the total is about, I think we needed 36. We have 37 plus.
Okay.
It's not, if you went and took the count, I've, I've counted multiple-
I counted 37. So I would just want to hear from you. The reason why I asked that, and this isn't particularly important to us, but it's something you're going to want to check with the ZBA. The ZBA permit says 41.
I don't ever remember that.
It does. We, I, I pulled it up with the chair of the ZBA today.
The, the-
One of the sta-
It was two per unit.
Right. So, and, and again, it, I'm just, this isn't-
The total is one and a half, so.
I, I'm, I'm just saying you might want to follow up with them because one of the, let me, I can pull it up if you bear with me for one second. One of the, hold on one second, I have it all here. Was in the email with, um-
We just want to bring it up because we want to talk.
I just want to make sure no one's surprised about anything after this meeting. That doesn't have anything to do with my board. It's just, I, we talked, I talked to the ZBA chair and I told her that there, there were discrepancies we found between their approval and our approval. And part of the, what we think the issue was, their approvals reference plans that were dated July 2021. Our approval references plans that were November 2021. So I think they looked at different plans than we did, and I think that might have been why there were some conflicting-
Yeah, I'm sure. There, there were many meetings and everything was done on Zoom at that point. It was a very weird time for everyone, so mistakes could happen.
Yeah, and, and, and I just want to make sure when you get to this, that this all gets ironed out smoothly and that you don't, you know, you're not back and forth between everyone.
We will bring up the parking aspect because particularly 46 Frankfurt.
Okay.
It said, in our approval, and it said, pave the existing two parking spots. Okay, it's two spots.
Yep.
You've created three and it's not even in the same location as what was approved for the two existing, okay?
Same location, yeah.
Yeah, the location's moved. From the-
The third spot, it was-
No, the, the whole thing's moved. Take a look at it from the plan.
There used to be like a hill over there.
What are, what are we doing?
Take a, at the north, the 46 Frankfurt parking spots. So show them the three here.
I know, hold on, I'm, I'm, I'm paused here.
So, okay. So you see where that is, like right up against, kind of like in front of the building?
Okay.
Okay, let's take a look at the approved plan.
That's the approved plan.
No, that's not the approved.
Hold on, are we still paused? Bear with me, bear with me.
Sorry.
I look at different things than you guys are looking at sometimes. There we go.
There we go. Do you see that up against the building? No.
Well, even in the ZBA decision, it specifically references only two spaces for 46 Frankfurt Street.
It was on a hill over there.
Yes.
That's what it was.
So you moved it. I'm just saying, that's what was approved. That's not what was built. And we have a little bit of issue because we don't know the dimensional setbacks of that, because there's a three-foot setback from building structure and a three-foot setback from the side, from sidewalks. The property line is a three-foot setback and they need still the nine by 18. So you've got 18 plus three plus three. So you need that depth.
Okay.
Okay? So when you push it too close in front of the building, you lose being able to go deeper with that. Additionally, it should be only two spaces and not three. I'm going to make the recommendation to the board it gets cut down back to two, from 37 to 36 spaces.
We have the extra space.
No, you don't really, because you need like a four-plus aisle walkway next to the walkway on the side.
Well, what he's saying is you can get rid of the space and still have 36.
Yeah, you have that walkway, but-
He's saying he has the extra space to play with, meaning if you get rid of it, it's not a problem.
You have extra space to play with. So we're saying, so as you're driving in, it's now number 18 spot.
So if you, if you, I, I drew it here, if you bear with me. This, this is, this is what Paula and I had kind of thought about, cutting this down to, you know, to a walkway. It doesn't have to be that big, but-
At least four, at least four feet, maybe five, but at least four feet.
And then you have two parking spaces next to it.
Stripe it. Four, so you can see that, and then you have, and then stripe the two spaces.
This is, this is what I was referring to, and again, we don't need to get into it because it's not my board. I just want to let you know. One of their findings of fact was in this permit, it says, this would leave a total parking at 41 spaces for the premises. That's in their permit, that's in the ZBA's decision. So you can iron that out with them. I just, I wanted to let you know, we saw that earlier when we were comparing the decisions and said, wait a second, there's only 37 on site. I agree with you, they-
I remember the approval being two spots per unit.
Yeah.
That's how it was and that's what we-
And it might just be a clerical error or it might be clarification. I, I just wanted to let you know. Again, it has nothing to do with our board.
The site plan that we approved was for minimum of 36 spaces. So taking off that one because we, we also, there's issues of backing out into the street. There's also, what you have to do is obtain a curb cut because it's, right now it's just granite. You're driving right over it. You don't even have a curb cut from the driveway.
We put a permit in for that, but it's held up, probably because of the same reason why you just quoted before about the setback. But are we 100% sure that the setback doesn't work? Because I did not project that this-
You have to provide the dimensions to us. You didn't provide it.
I don't know how big those are.
It has to be.
So where it was didn't have that wall in front of it. So now you have this in front of it. So now, now you have to see if it works.
Got it.
So, so I'm sure, I, I don't know if you were involved when we did this originally. We, I, not only did, not only is it in our permit decision, but I remember expressly saying to Dave King- but I remember expressly saying to Dave King, moments before we approved it, forty-six should never be part of this development, it's even written into our permit decision that says forty-six Frankfurt is not part of this project. If you read our permit decision, there's a blurb at the bottom of page one, that says forty-six is not part of this project.
I thought it was that there's an easement onto.
So there's a parking easement for forty-six, which was always part of it, because part of your parking, that right-hand lot is on forty-six, the six spaces. So what I'm trying to say is, we never approved this as part of the project, so now we're going back, and now that it's part of the project, we're trying to see, okay, does everything match up and it makes sense?
So the ZBA, it was an already sixteen-unit project, and it had forty-six Frankfurt Street as a single-family home. They approved the single-family home to be cut up into a two-family, and then the two-family then has become part of the project from sixteen units to eighteen units, so it's kind of like part of the multifamily condominium development now. The site plan that the planning board approved was only after the first permit at the ZBA for the sixteen units, and it did not encompass forty-six. Yeah, when you went back, you didn't come back to us for an amended site plan to.
When we, when we got the approval for the two, it wasn't this, it was.
Right, it was the.
zoning board, yeah.
It was zoning, it wasn't you guys.
Right, so, so this, the site plan never got amended, this is part of the modification we'll be doing tonight, is to making sure that it encompasses the whole project now.
I understand you're trying to help, just that we had a bunch of different contractors on this, and a lot of different opinions, and over the past three years, we've sunk over five million dollars in this, and we just have to try to get people moved in, and I know we have to follow the rules. So, you know, trying to find a way to get everything that you guys need done in the quickest amount of time, because we have people that want to get their kids into school and can't, because we can't get a CO.
Mm-hmm. I, I, I can't speak to that, because I don't know what, I don't know what steps we could take in the interim to allow, you know, I think I saw you have eight units under agreement right now?
Nine.
Nine. I, I don't know, you know, if there's a mechanism to, to, to say, you know, you can close on so many units while this is going on. I'd have to defer to our building commissioner on that, if he says, or Chantel, if you'd say, you know, if, if the, of course, part of the moving, part of the other moving piece is, it, the whole, this whole project required the ZBA to determine what parking was allowed, what, what parking was required first, then it came to us for site plan.
Yeah.
So, so we had to get that number first, then we did the site plan, then after that, you guys did the two-family, which didn't involve us, which is fine, but now we're getting the whole thing back, and we're saying, okay, it has to match up to a site plan that it doesn't match up to anymore, so I, I don't know if there's a way to.
I don't think there is a way.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I mean, that's gonna be up to, it's, it's gonna be a legal process for that, because we don't, you're gonna have to get these, the condo docs recorded, probably for anybody to get potential.
Well.
But, that's not, that's out of our hands, we're just working, we're just, we're just working on this.
Attorney, right?
Yeah, Rob is my.
Yeah, Rob, go ahead, Rob.
Rob Ansel, um, the condominium documents are just reflective of the as-built plan. There was a requirement that the documents be reviewed by town council to comply with the plans. I, I, I represent approximately a thousand condominium associations, that's what our law firm does in Westford. I, I've never been asked by a municipality to have the condominium documents reviewed. They, your new town council did an excellent job, a very thorough job, reviewing the condominium documents. The extent that we have as-built conditions that are different than the site plan, which would prevent the board from issuing a CO, that really has nothing to do with the condominium documents, and I, I don't think that there are any issues. My suggestion would be that the board make a recommendation to the building inspector that it issues a CO for the eight units that, or the nine units, I'm sorry, that we have under agreement, and we'll do what you've asked tonight for the first time of comparing what, what was built and what our condominium documents show. We've had, the listing broker is on the call as well, Donna Lett. We, we have been trying to get our act together to close these units since the beginning of the year. We're finally here, as Mark Klinger said, we have a number of people that are waiting to close. We have a few people that are staying in hotels. I, I don't see that there's gonna be any public safety risk that the, that the building department hasn't picked up in their inspections. We have listed all of the municipal requirements in the condominium documents, and we'll turn around and we'll, we'll submit a, a plan so that we can get an occupancy permit on the remaining units. But I, I, we're, we can't subs- we, the developer has full right to, unlike in a residential home, we can, we have full right to change anything. If we need to relocate parking spaces, or make any changes like that, our condominium documents.
Excuse me right there, not without modification.
Yeah, it should have been done first, the modification should have been asked first, before the modifications were made.
Correct. You can't just do it at will.
I, if you let me finish, what I was saying is, from a condominium document standpoint, we have reserved the rights to do that. To the extent that the plan is different, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying that I would be, have the authority and the right to make those changes after we sell our first few units, unlike what we would have in a single-family dwelling situation.
So, so let me just read you, so I, I, our, we, we did run this by our legal team beforehand, and the response was, we were not aware that a modification of the site plan was necessary, we do not recommend approval of the condo docs for recording, if the approved site plan does not match what was, what will be originally recorded with the condo docs. That's what, that's from our legal team, from MTC.
Okay, for my client, this is exceedingly, exceedingly, exceedingly frustrating. I, I, I don't know where our communication was broken down, but we really have been trying to work with the city to move this along, I, I.
Well, it really depends on, I guess, people that you have involved, because clearly there are site plan modifications to be made, and now they're before us at the board at the eleven-point-ninety-ninth hour.
And they're minor, and they have to do with parking, you have authority to make sure that we, we are going to comply with whatever you are asking of us, which it seems like you're looking for clarification relative to a few parking spaces, and we certainly have the right to be able to do that.
Well, your clients also asked for modification of some special permit conditions as well, so.
And, and we've also only got through about half of the changes so far, there's, there's, there's a lot of them. I, I wrote them in red down there, but there's, I, I don't, like I said, if, if, if I, I don't have, I personally, I don't have a problem with closing on units, some units in the development. The units at forty-six Frankfurt are somewhat problematic for me, only because that was never part of our approval, and it's expressly prohibited in our approval that that be part of this development. So for, I noticed two of those units are under agreement, so those two are particularly problematic for closing.
Can I, I, I don't, I, we have the ability to, you know, make, keep all of our parking on forty-six. We can create a separate association, and we can, or we can create processes, we can do whatever the board wants. I, I don't really understand what you're concerned.
I have a question about that. I remember during the approval process, that when we were trying to get the right amount of parking spots, we said we're gonna go for forty-six Frankfurt, and we couldn't split it up, because I think, because of the dimension of the exact lot, and we were gonna use parking from it, that it, we, we couldn't cut it up that way, so it had to be part of it.
Well, they were gonna be easements originally, they weren't gonna be, it wasn't gonna be subdivided.
So.
Forty-six was gonna stay the same, they were both gonna stay the same lot sizes, it was just gonna be UC, they were gonna be parking easements.
Got it, and what's the issue of that being part of the HOA?
So the issue was, if, if, if you, if you go back and you watch the meetings, which I didn't have a chance to today, because I, I, we, we got kind of caught up in trying to figure out what were the differences between what was built and what, you know, what, what was shown on, on the original plan. When we had these original meetings, and there were many of them, one of the issues that was sprung upon us at the very last second, within a half hour of us making the decision, was, oh yeah, by the way, at some point in the future, forty-six may or may not be part of this. I remember there was a conversation about, we might buy forty-six and tear it down and put a third floor on fifty, or we might, I forget, there were a whole, there were three different ideas about forty-six, and we said, don't confuse the issue, if you want to do something with forty-six, come back to us when you decide what you want to do. And no one ever came back to us, ever. So that's what the problem was, there was, because, because parking is shared, and I know luckily the ZBA handled parking, so I think we're, we're okay there, because the ZBA said, there's two spaces on the forty-six Frankfurt, and four on this site that would be used for forty-six Frankfurt, that's fine. When it came back to us for this meeting, you all of a sudden gave us a plan and said, forty-six is now part of it, but that was never part of our decision, so now we have to go back and we have to say, okay, how does that affect the overall decision that we're doing? I agree, it's not a huge deal, I don't think, in the grand scheme of things, but like Paula said, it creates conflicts in our ordinance. If forty-six is part of this development, it's part of a eighteen-unit multifamily development, backing out onto streets is not allowed in our code. That wasn't a problem before with forty-six as a two-family, or as a single, which I believe was brought up in the meeting two or three years ago. Fine, again, individually, these are all small things that we can handle, the problem is, this last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was, you threw fifteen things at us, and said, we, we need you to, to say that everything's okay. Well, individually, yeah, they're probably fine, collectively, it's not. Collectively, we have to go back and say, you know, how does this make sense? You know, we're getting rid of the landscaping buffer between the abutting property. The fence that you ended up installing is against the pro, is against the parking area, so now the trees that showed on the landscaping plant can't be put in. That fence was supposed to be a vinyl fence, it's not. The fence on the south side behind the dumpster was supposed to go all the way to the property line, it doesn't. It stops at the chain-linking wood fence behind the dumpster. Fine, again, individually, they're not a problem. If you came to us with one or two or three of these, it's fine. You came to us with fifteen different things, and said, you're fine with all of them.
And that all, it, it wasn't to obviously frustrate everybody, the reason why this happened, like I said, there was change of command so many times. I, as the developer owner, it's under my name, people working for us that we paid a lot of money to, that did not do the right job. And then at the eleventh hour, I have to come in and travel up here and make sure that everything is getting done, which I think, as you could see when you go there, besides all these little issues, I mean, big issues, whatever you want to call it, it's a beautiful place. I mean, we, you could tell that a lot of money, time, and care was put into this, there were changes, and when I spoke to Chantel, she's like, you know you're supposed to come to our board and modify, so I had no idea.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm being a complete, I'm being honest here, this is not by anything that I want to do on purpose, it's that, okay, so there's chain link there, but I own the property now, because the church was trying to sell this to us the past year and a half, with a whole bunch of problems back and forth, finally, you know, I own the property, and I'm saying that, you know, even if we needed forty-one, I've got extra parking spots, it's not, everything is taken care of now. It's, we're in a much better spot that we don't have the issue with them anymore, which is great. And, you know, some of these items, as you said, they look small, but collectively, it's big, which, which I, you know, I, I apologize for. I didn't realize all of this, and Chantel brought everything up and walked in as very kind and told me I could get on this meeting. I, I ran in at the eleventh hour and, and signed up so we could be here tonight, but it still doesn't take away the fact that, you know, we, we've put so much into this, and I will take responsibility that we messed up, I did not know all of this, I was getting very bad advice from many other people. I have a great real estate agent, Donna, who's here with me, I have a great attorney now, in the past, I did not have the right team here. I was, I don't know, I would say robbed and stolen from, whatever you want to call it, right? So we're here today, this, this property could have, property could have gone to foreclosure multiple times, because of the amount of money that we had to put into it. And we kept going, because I personally, in my career, I don't back away from anything, we're not even gonna make money on this, but I need to finish it, I can't leave this here.
So.
We're too much into it, so what I'm, you know, I, what can we do here, because I'm not, I'm trying to say, like, I'm not running away.
So we're, we're, and we want to help you work through this too. So, it's like, our board, we just, we needed, we need a revised site plan to approve in that regard. So it's like, we need the site plan review revised, so we can approve that. Can it be a condition? Yes. Can we condition also that it's like, well, maybe we could do COs up to the nine at this point in time, and then no, nothing more until you submit the revised site plan or any other deliverables we're looking for, like curb cuts.
We can put in a recommendation.
So things like that, however, we are not the authority, though, to actually do the release, we can say that would be part of our decision. I'm not sure how that follows with the building commissioner, or when they're looking at that, do they need, how does this affect the condominium documents? It's like, if, is that going to prohibit the closures, for not having those recorded in that regard? So it's, it's like, that, that piece of it, we just need to review that, are they, are they fine for what it was existing, but it doesn't match the site plan, so I'm not sure what language or anything could be put in that would be satisfactory for that.
That's why I hired Rob.
I would be.
So that's kind of out of our a- aspect of, like, we're here, we just look at, we can approve the condo docs, and we look at the site plan, and then it's like, the other magic happens with all the recordings, and the COs by other departments, and, you know, the lenders and what they want to see, and other pieces like that. So, so we can do a part of it, but I'm not sure how the, how we.
Yeah, I'm sure the whole.
What the other pieces can fall.
I would be more than willing to, in, to take a, to put in the formal motion, to see if we can take a vote, obviously at the chair's discretion, that, that we give a recommendation to the building commissioner, that it's okay to, to issue COs on, on nine, up to nine units. Like Paula said, that doesn't mean that it'll happen, but I, I.
We gotta try.
I, 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 so I, I want to, two things I want to say. First of all, you're handling it very well, I think you've done a good job. I think that it, it was a terrible misfortune that our code was confused, our code, our code was bifurcated enough where you had to go to ZBA and to planning. And, and I think part of it was the added confusion of adding the two-family at forty-six after the fact, because you did, you went to the ZBA, they authorized you to create a two-family, as the chair, I think the chair of the ZBA reminded me today, I don't think they necessarily even said it can be part of the project, they just said you can create a two-family, and then obviously, there's the legal mechanism of creating a condo, and you can create the condo at your will. So I think that all of those things happened, and it caused a mass confusion. So I think that the first step is to get the real engineered plans, not this as-built, engineered plans showing, you know, like I said, I think that the ZBA chair had asked specifically about, you know, making sure that the parking spaces met the minimum dimensional requirements, and, you know, the minor stuff we're talking about, I think a lot of them are just notes on a plan.
Yeah.
But there's bigger things at play too, meaning we're still handling a bigger issue than, this is a different approval than we did before. We did sixteen units, now it's eighteen units. So it's, you know, again, it's just, I think it's paperwork, but it's paperwork we can't solve overnight, so if.
I'd be looking to see an updated site plan by the Allen and Major Associates, it was like page three and plus, because you're also updating the landscaping plan that was submitted, and you're updating the parking plan that was submitted, so we want to see those updated. I would say your best bet would be to go back.
To Allen.
Make us a few modific, they already have the plans to just.
They, they said they have to come back out and re-measure everything, and it's like eighteen thousand dollars to do the plans. Like, it's, it's insane, that's why New England came in and was able to do it, and, you know, this is.
It seems like a plot plan, I'm sorry, I mean, it's not, it's not an engineered plan here.
Yeah.
It's not, a site plan has dimensions on it, it doesn't even have dimensions on it.
Yeah.
The plan that we did is, has a certification for the purposes of recording it with the registry of deeds and complying with the condominium statute, which is chapter one eighty-three A. It, it does not, it's not an engineered plan relative to a, an as-built site plan, which you would have for a residential subdivision, but the plan is adequate for recording in the registry of deeds, and that, that's what we did, I.
I mean, if you can get, if you can get, if you can get Kent to redraw this plan, showing the revised landscaping, showing the parking dimensions, showing, you know, all, all of these changes that we're talking about.
It needs to be an engineered stamped plan, I want to see a site plan.
I mean, it's stamped by a surveyor, but.
I want to see a site plan. I want to see a site plan. It's supposed to be professionally done, like this, you're just altering it.
I didn't even look at the stamp, is he, is he a PE, or is it just a survey stamp?
I think Ken is a...
Well, Ken doesn't stamp plans, it's stamped by someone else.
Okay, got it.
If you want a diagram of like, where your, where your parking spaces are assigned, that's one thing, but it's not the site plan we're approving.
Um, I don't even, I, I cut off, I gotta go back to our...
There's a number of things, like on the site plan we approved too, with, and we'll, I'll go through some photographs as well, but you still have fencing from forty-six Frankfurt all over the site plan, and if you're not planning on installing that, it's actually cutting off the whole backyard for forty-six from fifty. It's still in on every site plan, not on your as-built, but there's a change here, it's like, well, you didn't put, you didn't put that in, is that coming off the plan, we'll take that off the plan, because that's not what was approved, that's different, um, regards to that. You're supposed to show us what the landscaping is going to be, that you asked for landscaping changes, just said, I just don't want to do any further, it's like, well, there is a landscaping plan that was approved, what is it, do you want to change from that landscaping plan, are you X-ing out certain things? You might be even the hand-mark that one up, you know, that one's...
Yeah, but I think, I'm not sure, Chantel, you mentioned, like, the landscape is like, until, when you get, when you get the final approval, you have six months to finish what's on there, or something, is that the, is that the case?
Um, in some of these cases, not necessarily, it's all case-by-case dependent, so we're talking about, like, like here, um, it was like, well, give you a little bit of time, within, when we say six months, not at the whole thing done, it's like, maybe after the first occupancy, you get it done.
Got it.
Scenario, but we'll be looking at, I would just say, we'll be looking at though, maybe, you're also looking to like, waive doing the sidewalk on Frankfurt Street, it's like, we want to see the sidewalk done, we'll give you time to do the sidewalk, but we're going to condition that now, maybe on a, on additional COs, not six months after, where it might not get done, or we want to see a bond posted, or something.
I have a question on the sidewalk.
Sure.
There's no other sidewalk on there, can we make that green space, or it has to be sidewalk?
It is sidewalk now.
Yeah, that's there, but the rest of the entire block and all, and everywhere else...
The sidewalk is just in front on Frankfurt, just from that piece, to the corner.
Yeah, the front to the corner, okay.
Yeah, that's what you...
That all the neighbors use as parking.
Yeah, and they're supposed to raise the curbing, so they shouldn't be parking on the sidewalk, no.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be a sidewalk there. This was conditioned to bring that, bring that aspect back, to bring that neighborhood up, you're doing eighteen units in RB, where it's like, two-family tops, eighteen units, okay, there's a lot you're adding there, we understand also that, you know, with the industrial building, it's converted, and yes, it'll be better, but it is going to be at, um, more density, as well.
True.
Like that.
Um, yeah, it's not stamped by an engineer, P, uh, Bruce, Bruce Kingsman's a land surveyor, stamped by a surveyor, okay.
But you're, I mean, just for clarification, you're, you're, you're looking for survey-related things, not, I, I don't, we don't necessarily have to go back to Allen and Major to get this plan done, if you, you want us to...
We want to see that revised, how is it revised from that plan, so revise it from that plan.
Right, okay.
Okay, and with all the, with the dimensions on it, and there's a lot of notes on it about what's to be done, so it's kind of like, is this not going to be done, is what's being changed, are we taking out the, um, the granite, the curbing in front of the, um, metal barrier on Frankfurt Street? So that one, where Paul put in there, the vertical granite curbing, that's what it says in the plan, so take that off the plan, from the revised site plan. Are you doing the vertical granite curbing on the other side, there should be some kind of curbing, if it's not vertical granite, you're putting in concrete curb stops or something, prevent people from just driving onto the lawn, you've got to find, stop somewhere, because you don't have a visual barrier anywhere. You said it was going to be a concrete walkway, it is not a concrete walkway, going into the units onto the, the north side, it is just a taped surface. Um, there's a, there are notes all over the, of things that are to be done that aren't done, so, we need that.
We're done to drop differently.
Clarified, and, and what the board wants to, like, you know, willing to let go, and still wants to see from the approved site plan. So again, that fencing that shows like, you still have a barricaded fence all the way on, on forty-six Frankfurt going around, it has not been removed from the site plan.
What, the, the crux of the issue is, we have a plan that we approved, what was built isn't in conformity with the plan, so unless we get a new plan, it's in violation of the plan we approved, that's the crux of the issue.
Yeah.
Um, and, and it's, it's the type of thing where, I, you know, again, I, I understand that, you know, it, it, things cost money, especially when you're dealing with engineering companies, um, I don't know why it's cheaper to do New England engineering versus someone who's already been on-site, and already drawn extensive plans, but that's fine, it is what it is. Most of these are just notes that need to change on the original plans, like, you know, showing where the parking actually is, and showing what the actual, you know, sizes are, I mean, showing the, like Paula said, the, you know, the, the difference between concrete and asphalt walkways, inconsequential. If that's the only thing, not a big deal. But, but what, what we were presented with is, something that was built contrary to the plan that was approved, which is in violation of the plan that was approved, so all we get to do is just get them changed and corrected, and go from there. I mean, how you do that is, I don't know, I guess, business decision.
Like, the, the fencing, the metal fencing going between the, the church property, which is now under your possession, for that, it's like, well regardless that you own both sides of the fence now, you're not going to own the other side of the fence, it's going to be to condominium association owning the other side of the fence.
Yes, and it could be changed in the future.
Right, so still want to see a chain link fence there, should not be with landscaping, and/or, I'm just going to put this out there, now that you own both sides of the fence, you do have a ninety-nine-year lease, can you, may, could, would it be considered of just doing a simple A and R to give that property over to the project, rather than having a ninety-nine-year lease that will then be an issue, could be an issue later on, for many people purchasing later?
Yep, yep, all these things where we have to figure out, we want to get fifty Frankfurt under wraps, and then figure out how we're going to do the, the other project, and how it's going to look at the end, but right now, at least we have the separation between the two, with the chain link fence, because imagine doing that, and then, we have like, I don't know, we want to entryway...
Is that something you're predicting in the future, where you'd be looking to give some property back over to the...
Um, yeah, potentially, I mean, I, I have no idea, we just had to follow the, the law, and what, what was there, we had the lease in place, and that had to follow with, because part of the, Rob, if you could help me out here...
Yeah, until you got unified, but since you kind of, I know it's a different LLC that purchased, but since you have control of both sides now, you, you could do that if you wanted to.
Well, I would say, I'm a small percentage, I mean, I'm a percentage owner of fifty Frankfurt, I'm a hundred percent of, I mean, of the other side, with another partner, but...
When you say the other side, when you mean one seventy-nine Pratt?
Meaning one seventy-nine Pratt, yeah, so it's not the same entity, and it's not the same type of, it's completely...
Let's not confuse things, that was just, that was just a...
I just bring that up of when we're looking to, to ask, you're talking about the fence, we're talking about the fence, the fence though, is for the benefit of this project, not seeing what's on the other side, okay? And they're not, and they're, you're not going to own that, once it's all sold, so...
True.
Okay, so who owns the fence?
Exactly, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, I got you.
So, it's like, you may be fine now, because it's just for, you think for construction purposes, but in the end, what's it supposed to look like, like, what's to be the finished product for the development?
Got it, so, I would say, in whatever we do with that, because we're going to have to probably come before somewhere, and get it done, is that it gets changed to eventually...
Well, we're here tonight, because you asked about this, about the fence, but it is a condition number nineteen to have, have a, not a chain link fence there.
Yeah, the convention...
With landscaping.
Condition nineteen is decorative fence between the two, so that's another thing that, you know, if, if we're, if we're modifying this, you'll have to request for us to either change that permit condition or change the fence, because that was an express permit condition, that that fence be decorative vinyl between, because at the time, it was a church, and we figured, you don't want the competing uses to see each other, to, to deal with each other, so the fence was a separation?
It's, it's a common thing to, to have, but at the same time, the church wanted us to put something up right away, while we're in the middle of construction, without even getting pavement, we couldn't replace a vinyl fence three times, but something like this, okay, it's a chain link fence, it could go up right now, we satisfied, they, they have this separation, and our trucks are not driving on their property, because, you know, the guys were doing it, and we had to put something up already, because they just kept complaining, it's like, let's put that up, so don't put up a vinyl fence, that could get ruined.
So what landscaping can you put there now in front of the fence, because there was landscaping to be put there?
There are a few trees, I think, that were supposed to be there.
Well, they still fit there.
They wouldn't fit there, they wouldn't fit with another, with a vinyl fence either. The trees, how we added on there, didn't make sense.
It's where you put the fence, because the fence was not right smack in the middle of the grass line, it was actually further back.
Hold on, let me, let me find, hold on, let me find a picture of the fence for the sake of everyone watching online, I know Chantel took a picture of the fence side, I think.
It's right behind that.
We're trying to, I'm trying to figure out, how we...
Right there.
How, if we should change the condition.
Oh, hold on, got to share my screen again. So this is, this is what the fence side looks like now.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, and I mean, I thought the same thing, that the fence is, you know, it's two feet from the edge of pavement, you're not going to plant anything there, even if you did, it's going to die immediately.
That's not where the fence was on the approved site plan.
Right, the fence on the approved site plan was closer to the parking lot on one seventy-nine.
Yeah, so it was not in the location that it was planted.
They would not let us put it an inch further.
Yeah, so this is...
They were, they were in the process of suing us to try to ruin our entire project.
Again, I was just saying, from what our perspective is, what we approved, I understand, we're like, so what, what can we do here?
Yeah, so this, so basically, they had it, three-quarters of the way, if you see it there, in my cursor, they had it three-quarters of the way, so it was the opposite, so it was about a foot from the property line, a foot from the pavement on the church side, which, you know, again, I think, like I, I keep saying it, like, any one, two, or three of these issues would have been easily solvable, it's just there's so many of them, and they came at the last second on something that was, the permit decision was three years ago, I mean, we had, you guys had three years to come back to us for, to revise the site plan, it's, it, you know, this is a self-imposed issue, quite honestly.
Uh, yeah, and I'm saying, it's, it wasn't done maliciously or on purpose, it was just, it was changing regards too many times, and also, to finish this project, I mean, we weren't building for three years, we had a lot of issues on this project, we pretty much rebuilt this from the inside out. And it cost probably two and a half times the amount of money that we budgeted for it, so, when we did the pavement, at a certain point, we had to, you know, we, there were changes, we had the utility, uh, what's it called, the transformer was supposed to be, the, the church complained about it, right, and then we had to spend fifty thousand dollars to move it to the other section, we had no choice.
I mean, this is another thing that...
Until you bought the church, you should have bought the church first.
We tried, we were in contract, and they backed out, and then...
Yeah, I remember, I remember David telling us about the issue of the church.
It was such a, it was not, it was not easy.
I mean, this is another thing where, again, individually, not a big deal, another, the permit condition was vinyl, vinyl enclosure to the dumpster.
Let's go section by section.
Oh, you, where do you want me to start?
Let's start the fence.
Yeah, well, they're vinyl slats, but it was decorative vinyl enclosure, but that's whatever.
All right, let's start at the big, the chain link fence.
All right, this one.
That is an absolute permit condition right now, so you're seeking, you asked us to modify this permit condition, just to leave it as it is.
Yeah.
Is the board okay with that, for that? Do you want to, maybe, do you want to see, I think the, anything, something, minor would be any, like, slats to it or something, if you think it's necessary, or better, that it's see-through?
I think that the future, I think that the future use of that building is probably going to be residential?
Yes.
And, that they will no longer be conflicting uses, most likely, or at worst, it's a church, because you can't do anything else there, it's RB, you couldn't do a commercial building or anything like that, so, I don't really have a, I don't, I don't...
I, I agree, I think, until we know what the other, what is going to be at that other property, it's kind of hard.
And at that time, when you come to us, or whoever you sell one seventy-nine to, and says, we want to put X in there, and if it's, if there are conflicts, we can then make that fence be...
As of right, it's a two-family, based on the code, and that's what it's going to be, that's the plan now.
It's a big building, isn't it, for a two-family?
No, it's, it's not, it's thirty-two-hundred square feet, but it's like, fifteen and fourteen, it's not exactly thirty-two-hundred.
I just assumed it was a big building, I guess.
It looks really big, but it is not at all, it's a big piece of land.
Yeah.
Is there enough landscaping on that? I mean, I guess, so, I'll just say, if I was in a two-family, you want to see some type of buffer between that and then somebody's giant, like, fence in a parking lot, landscaping on the other side, or something along those lines, you need, you know, something to...
So, so I think, so I think, if that fence ever gets replaced, and if it gets replaced because of that multifamily, it...
Put trees there instead.
Right, it, I mean, it'll either, I mean, the fence has to exist either way, now or in the future, in some form, because it's a permit condition, it's just a question of wiping out, does it have to be vinyl, I don't really care. Um, I, I mean, I usually, you know, usually we're very adamant that it has to be, you know, vinyl separating with...
We thought it was going to be like a commercial use, so it's that, but since it's a residential use, you should go, well, you know, people want their privacy between the two, you don't want to be at see-through, on a big property outline like that.
For the sake of not beating a dead horse, one of the other things that, that, was one of my original issues when I looked at this, was, when we did this, there was a church at one seventy-nine, right, so what we did was, you incorporated the parking plan for the church in this site plan, so as of right now, you're not, you're in violation of the site plan for the church, because that's not what's there right now.
The, the striping on that...
Yeah, what's there right now is just, and I agree, I wouldn't stripe it if I owned it either, because you don't know what you're doing with it yet, but what I'm saying is, when we approved it, we approved it knowing that there was going to be a church there, so that's the parking plan for the church, which doesn't exist right now, so, we can do away with that whole thing, you can take that out of it entirely, because, unless you're, unless it's going to be a church, it doesn't matter.
That was ensuring that there was enough parking spaces for the use, because the lease, for the seventeen spaces, it was, how many spaces are left for the current use, you had to make sure it was adequate enough space, and now it's not.
Right, so, all right, so that's, so that's that, and we talked about, you know, obviously, like I said, the, the plan that Kent did has this as a parking space, it's not, it has the far top one as a parking, and not as a parking space, it is...
But before we leave the fence, do we just, do you want to take out the provision of number nineteen entirely, modified, modification, so...
I, I'm fine with that, what I was thinking was, because we can't, I mean, we can do the modifications now if you want, but it doesn't matter until we get the modified site plan, so my thought was just to...
Well, we want to tell them what we're looking for.
Oh, right, you're right, yeah. No, no, and I, I, so I was thinking, so you just want to take a board temperature of what the vote, I have no problem with that, with what you're saying, getting rid of the fence, keeping the fence the way it is.
Well, I want to know what we're modifying it to, what the expectations are when we come back with the plan.
The, the permit condition should only state that there should be a fence separating one seventy-nine and forty-six fifty.
Which can just be shown on the site plan, as it is?
Yep, 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 just show on the site plan, you know, the fence is existing, or whatever.
We're going to show...
If you, if you don't, which I assume you don't want to change it.
That there are only, there are seventeen spaces along the fence line, and one of, including, it doesn't include the account for that pole already, so, you can hash mark that too, right behind the pole.
Yeah, so I think, Paula, just before you get into that, I think we're better off just saying that the, that, this is my suggestion, not the, not the board's feeling, just that the number of spaces provided on the site are adequate, once they're shown on a site plan.
Um, looking for thirty-six.
Right, right, what I'm saying is, once they make these changes to show on the site plan of what's actually there, I think it's fine, which is, yes, it's thirty-six.
We'll go through each section, thirty-six.
Right, there, there-
So I just wanna show, 'cause you're not, you're not showing it there-
So, oh, hold on, hold on.
Even on this plan here, there's a blank spot to the, to the north, but you're not showing the-
How about, how about this one? And, and I can, I can send this to you, if you want, but these are the notes that Paula, that, that I made when I was talking to Paula before, about, you know, showing, obviously, that not, that's not a space, that's the, that's the-
Pole, yeah, so we're gonna show the, the piece that's blocked out where the tele, where the, where the pole, utility pole is, you're gonna show the seventeen spaces along that line.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, oh, no, hold on, I didn't go down far enough, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen there.
There's seventeen.
All right, let me, let me count from the aerial, it's, it's, that's part of the problem, too, is I don't think that Asbilly Plan is correct.
No, look at the, look at the aerial view.
I know, that's what I'm doing right now.
I just, yeah.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, there are seventeen.
Yes.
That plan only shows fifteen, uh, sixteen.
Yes.
So, if you, if you take out the one with the, with the, um, that, that he has incorrectly listed as parking space, right.
Seventeen.
Right, there's seventeen there, yeah.
One, you're not showing the aerial on the view there.
Oh, sorry.
We wanna-
Every time I change a screen, it doesn't show up.
We wanna follow along-
I got, I got nine windows open here, so yes, so I was counting up, I was counting up this row, and I didn't count that one.
Piece at a time.
So, so this one might have been counted on his, and this one wasn't, whatever, it doesn't matter, there's seventeen, there are seventeen there, which is perfectly fine.
So, before we leave this parking area, there are the six spaces to the left, right? And Paul, we just talked about where the driveway opening has to come out, has to be shortened in a little bit, so that it, that the island has to come out further to cover the eighteen-foot length, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, I mean, that's one of the main parking dimensions I wanna see, is how far out that eighteen goes, to make sure that parking aisle is centered correctly, 'cause that eighteen shouldn't travel too far into that twenty-four, well, it says twenty-five, twenty-four foot, well, maybe Mayweather Street's twenty-five feet deeded, I don't know, but I, I know it's a, a private way.
Well, maybe you have to extend in the parking slightly, I don't know.
Right.
You know, another foot or two of pavement.
Yeah, what we were trying to say was, I don't think those were, actually, I can, I can take a rough measurement here, let's take a rough measurement, see how long-
But the eighteen-foot mark ends at the island and has to go up to ninety.
That's eighteen-ish.
It has to, the curb has to go all the way out to eighteen.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause that one's, yeah, 'cause that's only thir, if, I mean, the GIS is ballpark, but that's only fourteen feet-ish to where that curb comes in, so eighteen would take you-
So you might have to-
Out to about there, three, three or more feet.
Or go in.
Yeah, or get rid of, or just take, or, or take out the space and stripe it, and then, the only problem is, I don't think there's any place we can pick it up on-site, any other space.
Just make it deeper.
Just make it deep, like-
Yeah.
Just make it deeper.
Yeah.
Oh yeah. That might be the easiest thing to do.
That's the easiest way to do it, depending on how big that grade is, that change.
It's, it's not at all, but I'm almost sure that those are eighteen feet, I don't-
Yeah, well, thi- this one looks like it, that, like I said, that only, that, that left-hand side looks, looks shy.
It needs to come out a bit.
Yeah, and you certainly don't wanna car parked in, in the, the, the travel lane.
The driveway, so I'm in.
Right, that's the whole purpose of that, especially where someone's turning in, and they won't see it until after they've turned into the site, uh, because there's like a three, three-foot grade change from the street to, to there.
Well, then you don't really have a twenty-foot, five, twenty-four-foot wide opening, you've got part of a car in it.
It's fine if it's a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
I mean, you technically need twenty-four, but as long as it's man, maneuverable. What do you want to see next, Paula?
Okay, before, let's go down around the building, yep, right, yep.
Which one?
Dumpster.
Dumpster, okay.
Yep, so you're relocating the dumpster from where it was across, uh, when the seventeen parking spaces, to this location, um, Paul mentioned, in the prior, um, decision, the site plan approval, um, that white, the fence went all the way to the end, behind-
Yes, it went from here all the way down to the edge of the property line, which is shown right here, uh, hold on, I gotta change, oh no, I'm on the right screen, um, it goes from the edge of the property line, all the way to the, um, the middle point of Fairweather Street, so the dumpster on, if you compare the two, the dumpster is right about here, if you can see, I can zoom in a little bit, hold on, let me zoom in a little bit, so here's the transformer pad, the dumpster's about here, so it just goes, it, it technically, again, it's fine, just, just show the plan to, where it stops, and-
So revise the plan to show-
I think it's, I think it's okay.
Is the board okay with that?
Yes.
I mean, it, it, it looks fine, it's, it's, it's all overgrowth, but it looks fine.
All right, so continuing around the building there, so, and see the space, you're just gonna hash mark that space in front of the transformer.
Yes.
Yep, just put hash marks there, and also, there's a, you, and it is a permit condition, the pavement marker for the directional flow.
Oh, yeah, on the, this, this one, right?
Yes.
Right, right here.
Yep, so, put the mark-
That was, that was specific, we, the conver, there was a conversation about that, because you, you want cars that are parked in there to use Fairweather Street, and to not go backwards, um, out the other way, um, which I think, you know, if they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it, but at least you try and direct traffic the, the correct way.
Yep. Okay. That's not, and, just, um, before we leave that area, you, there was proposed three trees on that little hillside.
I, I got the landscaping plans down here somewhere, not that it ma, not that it matters, I mean, you, you can, uh-
So you're seeking to modify this, so, take this site plan, this landscaping plan, and just modify this, hand-drawn, whatever you'd like, to show this is what, you know, what's actually been approved, we'd like to modify it too, and what, it's like, what the board agreed to, so we're saying, um, obviously, the tree that's on the dumpster now can't be put in-
Yep.
To the right, and does the board wanna see, though, the trees, the other two trees, and then there's some shrubs off to-
Also wanna kind of steep incline, so I don't know how trees-
And let's look at a, we can look at a photo of that, it's in one of them.
I know, I'm trying to, oh, right there.
Yep, okay, that's what it looks like.
Pretty much the whole way through.
The fact that you have the fence there, I'm fine with, I don't think it matters if the trees are there, and I mean, it's up to you guys.
I think, um, just the shrubs, that, I think that, that's the barrier for the, a butter right there, um, on the end, so not the three trees, see the shrub?
These ones?
Yeah, right?
What, hold on, what are those?
Is that?
Those are wintergreen arborvitae's, so there's four arborvitae's, a, a budding, I, so, my only hesitation, I agree with Paula, would be that Mr. Piper requested those, that might have been part of the public hearing, I don't know without going back.
Let's look at the picture again.
I could ask him also, but-
It would be-
Yeah, right where the red car is, right across-
Yeah, right, right here, yeah, I will bet you anything those were requested.
Okay.
So if you can do the four arborvitae's there, um, it, it provides kind of a landscape screening, 'cause that's the back of his pro, 'cause that red car is his driveway going into his garage there, right, that you guys paved, which I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, is the board okay with that provision? It's like, eliminating the three trees, and just a lot, putting in just that little buffer.
Yep, okay.
I'm gonna excuse myself, I'm not really serving the purpose, I appreciate an consideration that we can do, we have a few families that are really trying to get their children registered for school, a military family that is staying in emergency temporary housing pending the completion of any kind of certificate of occupancy, unfortunately, they are, um, they're attempting to purchase Unit Eighteen, which is in, in forty-six, so I understand anything that we can do to get any sort of temporary occupancy for that family, so that their children can attend Fitch Public Schools would be appreciated, but I'm not really serving the purpose otherwise, I thank you very much for your help.
Thanks, Donna, thanks, Donna.
And we can do our part, but a lot of things are also out of our control.
Understood.
So, so yeah, so I would say, I would say keep those, it, what, the, the biggest goal we have to weigh here, too, is, if we may promise the neighbors, this is three years ago, I don't remember them, so, if, if we have to err on the side of caution, like, the sidewalk's a good example, um, I, I know part of the conversation was, that, you know, the sidewalk was in rough shape, and some of the neighbors said, "Oh, it was in great shape," like, you know, it, it, it was a neighborhood benefit, so I think that's why, why it was in there.
It is in bad shape, it just, I, I really wanted to know if we could make it a green space, or just push it, give me a couple months to do it, so I could start selling it.
I have no problem with you closing units before you get to that.
Yeah, we can-
Okay.
Push out, as we get around to the corners, we can push out the sidewalk, um, and, like, let's see, eighteen units, so, at what, at what point do you say for COs, can say, get it done by sixteen?
Yeah, you just, you would want some control over the, you know, the remainder of the project, um, I, I, yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean, if you did, I mean, for the sake of argument, if you did, um, three quarters, that's fourteen.
Fourteen.
Um, in, I, it, if you wanted to do sixteen too, that's fine, you just don't wanna get to the point where there's, there's less-
No incentive.
Right, there's less incentive to-
Right, so fourteen.
I mean, I'm sure, obviously, even the last unit is valuable, especially what you're listing them for.
We wanna let you be able to sell and get the money to do the, the project work, but also wanna keep it on the hook to be done, so-
Yep, for sure, I agree.
That aspect.
Um, as far as the front, um, the, one of them was, you can just remove the, the comment about, you know, vertical granite curbing, 'cause that was on the original site plans, um, and, and like, things like that, the funny part about that was, that wasn't a planning board requirement, that was on your site plan, so, it's kind of like, okay, well, let's just, you know, let's, let's make it reflect what was actually there, you don't want a situation where you're creating a violation of, you know, the, the approved plan, so let's just clean it up, so, anyway, anything else there, Paula?
No.
Anyone else? All right, let me move to the next picture, so this is front, which, fine.
Yep.
No problem.
Those wood blocks are movable, we just kept them there, so nobody steps on it or drives over it-
Oh, at the moment.
Yeah.
During construction.
There was, did you wanna, there was some concern about whether this was in the public way, and is that okay, but I don't care, as long as it's-
Still in the property line.
It's on the property.
Yeah, in that little space right there, it'd fit right in there perfectly.
And, and like I said, I, it wasn't in the middle of sidewalk, so-
Yeah, and we also spoke with the, uh, postmaster, and asked him the best place to put it, and he requested that location.
Perfect, okay. All right, um, we are looking from, so our back is to 179, looking down Pratt Street.
Oh, so this is where we're talking about, where the, doesn't come out, where you need to-
Right, this is right here is the, was, was the issue we were talking about on the side of that.
So either make it a little deeper, or, and/or pull out the landscaping somewhat to cover the entrance, you know, protect the space up to the eighteen feet.
And, and this was, you know, Paula was saying here, this is, it had vertical granite curbing-
Just put in-
You, you put in the curb stops, yeah, the-
Concrete curb stops.
Concrete curb stops, yeah.
I mean, something, only, the only issue there is, you have a recreation space there, and you don't want people parking, pulling over, or, God, heaven forbid, hit someone, so, if, if it's not gonna be a garbrel, and I don't think it has to be, just put, put-
So, also designate on the plan-
Get rid of the vertical granite curbing.
Yep, and, but also, pet relief area, you need to designate it.
You do-
The pet relief area with the signage-
It was a permit condition.
It's a permit condition.
Just put a sign in the ground that says, "Pet Relief Area," 'cause you, you're not allowed to ban pets because of service animals and things like that, so-
As a project this size, you can't be bringing them off the street and have people expect to do their business, so-
Got it, exactly.
You need a, you-
What if there's like a dog park there, they put a fence around it for the, um, then that has to be something that comes up to the-
What's that?
If they, if there's gonna be, 'cause in the past, David was saying that there's gonna be a dog park in there.
A door?
Dog park.
Oh, a dog park.
Yeah, to put a fence around for the, for the tenants.
That's fine, that you, that's, they can use that as a pet relief area, as long as there's a little sign that says, "This is a pet relief area," something like that. The city, the city doesn't want dogs pooping on sidewalks, that's all it is, so you're gonna have a proper on your site for it.
As an association, you know, fence it in later-
Yeah.
As long as it's designated spot.
Okay.
I would say, you know, like I said, if you decide to do a fence later, don't, you don't have to show that on the plan, 'cause that's not required by code, nor our approval, do it, fine, don't, only show the stuff on the plan that we need to handle for this. Like, I was trying to tell Dave King before, don't muddy the situation, let's just get through this, and, and, you know, whatever, that's why, like I said, that's why we, the issue for-
We wanna say, and, 'cause it's a competition, that you have a designated area that, in your condo doc, it's like, there is a designated area, you're telling people to utilize and be responsible for and maintain.
Yeah, and this-
So it's not offsite, it's onsite.
This is another view of the other side, but we're beating that one to death, but that's the same entrance, so, uh, let's see what's next, and then I got, Paula, I got your photos too, these are just Chantel's.
I'm gonna measure that first thing in the morning, just to see-
Yeah.
How much space and how much further out we need to go.
Yeah, so in that area too, on the site plan, it's that, you, you're having like a six-foot vinyl fence all, all in front of all those doorway openings, like, you can only have the pathway going down, 'cause that whole backyard was going to be fenced in for the two-family.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, and that was another funny thing, now that Paula mentions it, that we, we didn't mention, and again, probably would've just died if it was one of the only things, but, this, so this is the site plan that you, the original engineer drew, right? And it's got a fence that goes through the middle of the parking area. This is the fence line right here, now, the, there was a brief conversation about, was that the existing fence, but I don't think that-
There was, but-
Okay, so, so-
It didn't go that far out.
So what might have happened is, because this was a single at the time, this was before the, the change, um, that fence might have existed, and then you created that parking area, but either way, it's shown on the actual proposed-
Not to be removed or anything, it's just like, here's a fence.
Yeah, layout and, and, yeah, layout and materials plan, um, I mean, unless we're missing a note somewhere.
No, it was mentioned in the ZBA memo, that it was gonna be fenced in.
Existing fence, yeah, yeah.
As a two-family.
So anyway, that, that's-
But you've, that's since changed, it's now like an open space, um, there are proposed, uh, before we leave that spot though, right there, there's supposed to be two trees.
Yes, right there, but it also says on the plan that's where, I think for snow, to put snow-
Snow storage area, yeah, that's this one right here, yeah.
Right, but then you go down to the landscaping plan.
It shows two trees right in that area.
They have trees on, in the snow storage area, which-
Well-
I mean, they, they, it's not really conflicting, I mean, we've seen that before, but-
The plower just, it would push the actual tree out of the ground.
Mm-hmm, especially when they're young, you would probably kill it just from the salt and everything else, again, fine, just make a decision, cross them out if you wanna cross them out, fine.
Is the board fine with them not putting the two trees in that location?
Okay, my, my hope is, if you, if you so choose, um, or if the association so chooses, and they decide they wanna put in trees after the fact, that, you know, this, they, there's a million state organizations, the Arbor Foundations-
Oh yeah, they're doing free ones, yeah.
They do trees for free, so-
Yeah, okay.
Um, all right, let me get back to, let me go to Paula's photos, uh, your photos[1459.66]
Uh, your photos are here.
Yep.
Let's go to the top one, all right, so.
And we appreciate your perseverance with this too, it was a lot of.
It's been, it's been tough.
There's a lot of devil in the details.
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate it all.
We want to get you over the finish line.
Yes, I, I know we're all on the same team. And I certainly, and I certainly, I know I said it, but you, it does look nice, you do, you did a good job, it's just.
Thank you.
You know.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
Yeah, so anyway, so these are Paul's photos, this is the back of forty-six.
Uh, that's fifty, the back of.
Fifty, I'm sorry.
Yep, keep going.
Oh, no, this is forty-six right here.
No, it's not.
Where you're standing is the back of forty-six.
It's not forty-six, it's the back of fifty.
Okay.
See all the, all the, um, electrical units, keep going.
Oh, oh, you're, I'm looking at something different than you.
Where are you looking at?
Timeout. We're both, we're both looking at two different things, this is the back of forty-six.
You can probably get the bar off the top too.
There's the back of forty-six.
There you go, yeah.
So we're looking at the back of forty-six towards fifty, these are the top of Paul's photos.
Yes.
And then.
So.
Oh, you want me to go back to that?
So immediately.
Oh, yeah, this is the curb.
Immediately, it's like beef, it's like, this is where we need the, the dimensions, but you need the curb cut done and that granite removed and the rounding's done before occupancy for that. Like you, that, for, for, I know that's probably the one on your heart, on your heart list, but.
Yeah, and that's, we put in for it last week.
You can't be driving over and have parking over the.
My, my hope is, and I, we defer to the DPW for this, because it's, went on charge of the streets, my hope is, you can take out this section to this, there's, there's a, there's a break here.
Yeah.
It looks like you have above four or five feet of this existing granite.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, if the city's okay with it, you take out this section, and you have a parking space here, a parking space here, and then you just crosshatch this with lines showing not to park there. I, I didn't, I, it didn't make sense anyway, you have one parking space that literally went up to these stairs, but if someone pulled all the way in there, other people wouldn't be able to get around it to get up the stairs if they parked too close.
So you need a four foot, you need a walkway there pretty much, so you need like four feet.
Got it, we, we did put in for, uh, for the curb cut, and it's held up at the DPW. And we, we tried pushing them to say, hey, we need to get this done as soon as possible, because I have the guy ready to do it. Um, I'm not sure how we could get help with that, because, uh, the company that's gonna do it, that already put the permit in, it says it's pending, is saying, what's the story? They're saying, oh, they're waiting on, uh, the CO or something like that from special partner, like, it doesn't make, something's not making sense.
This would be done before you do that.
It's gotta be done before, or they're saying, oh, there's, uh, oh, then he called me back then and said, there's the concrete sidewalk that you have to do before that. It's like, it has nothing to do with the other, this is a brand-new permit for a curb cut, I don't know.
So I think part of it is, Chantel can probably talk to Ryan and Nick and Jeff, or Ryan and Nick, and say, you know, i- i- is it something that needs to be, i- is there something that's getting in the way? I don't think there's anything from the planning board's side, because I, I think if you convey to them that the board is okay with holding off on the redoing the sidewalk until further down the project, the, the timeline of the project. If that's what they were waiting on, then fine, this side wasn't part of the sidewalk they were doing anyway, it was on the other side. Um, and then maybe if you just talk to Ryan and Nick and say, you know, i- if, if, if you can, it looks like, it looks pretty straightforward, it looks like if you can remove up until that break, and that's okay with them, and you create that, um.
Yeah, they want to see that returned to them too.
They want us.
Granite.
The granite.
Curbing, that you pull out.
So the granite curbing that's being pulled out to be put back, you're saying?
No, she's saying return to the DPW, so they can use it in another project they want.
Yeah, I have another piece over there that's four feet.
You can ask, yeah, you can ask.
Actually, you know what, you need to use that on Frankfurt.
If they'll let us, if they could take it, I mean, if these guys could take it out without destroying it is the, is the question.
Hopefully, it's granite.
And the other side, there is, there are, there is granite curbing over there.
Not along the full length, there's, so recall, there was a driveway there that you took out, so there was a break, that now you have to put a granite curbing back there, and that's in one of my photographs, actually.
So on the other side, the driveway was.
Go ahead.
That was taken out before us, we just did that one, it was, uh, yeah, going around.
Around the corner.
Yeah, there used to be one over there.
That's the corner.
I don't think we took that out.
Uh, so, right there.
That's driveway.
Well, there was.
We, we.
So that, so there's a place, and it says actually on the site plan, is replace it, so you're gonna put.
Yeah, yeah, to replace it with.
Granite curbing, so.
It wasn't the hallway, it was just.
There's a missing piece or pieces, so.
No, the conditions.
That was forty-six, right? Yes, and if you have the pieces, you can use them there.
Okay, perfect.
Okay?
Okay, yeah, okay.
I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
I, 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 I think that, you know, the way these, the way these traditionally got handled is, you know, obviously predating Chantel, but Mike would go to DPW and say, hey, you know, we had the planning board conversation, the planning board's moving down the timeline for the sidewalk, see if they have questions for you, and if they do, maybe we can, you know, get that ball rolling. Because Paul is right, we gotta, you gotta create the parking for, for forty-six before people park at forty-six, um, but I, I, hopefully it can be solved.
I mean, it's not uncommon to drive over the curbing, but.
Yeah, or I could give them other spots on the other side, not changing.
Right, it doesn't need to happen, so we just, but that just, how quickly can that happen?
We have, we have extra parking on the other side, because we didn't sell those units that are taking those spots, so we could give them that temporarily, and then.
Okay.
They could go back there as another idea. Chantel, if I could ask you a question, I think, I'm not sure if I forwarded you the email from Ryan, there's two Ryans, I realize, at DPW.
Yeah.
I think I was in touch with the wrong one.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yes.
Because he's the one that said to me, oh, it, you know, we should speak to planning.
Send it to the assessor's office.
Oh, Ryan Bovin.
You did, you talked to the assessor's office, so, um, at the DPW.
Ryan Colleen.
It's Ryan Colleen, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have this right person's information.
Mm-hmm.
Now, does that sound okay to board members about that? It's like, we just want, it's like before, that, we, just, he needs to get the curb cut, take care of that, remove the block, do the striping and make two spaces over there.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
Okay with that?
And.
Oh, freezing.
You can assign temporary parking somewhere else.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
If they allow.
Yeah, and then these are just, these were just sidewalk conditions, I mean, I agree with Paul, like, you know, part of, part of the original, you know, approval for this was basically, there's always a, there's always a trade-off when you do a large-scale multifamily development, we're creating more density than what's typically allowed in that area, so there's usually some improvement, and in this case, it was the sidewalk.
So this tree, I mean.
Yeah, the tree's, the tree's gonna be problematic, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't want to kill that, that's like a eighty to a hundred-year-old tree.
So, so, I would suggest talking to DPW about that, maybe, maybe they allow, I can't, I don't, I can't see the other side of it, no, I can't see the other side of it, but I don't know, maybe they.
Up to the tree.
It's in there pretty good.
Yeah, you leave that four-foot section the way it is, I don't know.
Well, it's, or just up to where it is there, just the corner.
Oh, actually, the sidewalk doesn't include that, it only goes this way.
It only goes to there, yeah, that's Pratt on that side, that's.
Yeah, because it doesn't go up Pratt, so it doesn't go there anyway, it stops here.
Correct.
Oh, so that, that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
No, they, they just may want to see at the end though, because it's a corner, that it's lower, like for ADA.
So on the site plan, I was looking at that, on the approved plan, it actually had the ADA transition on the south side, hold on, let me pull it up. Again, we're looking at the wrong thing, sorry guys, hold on one second. Um. So here, it's got the, the transition right here, you see the transition curb to flush, and it's got the sensory pad there, the ADA pad, it's got that on the, it doesn't have that on this side, um, and that was part of the plan, so, um. I mean, unless, unless there's something otherwise, there's not already a transition on that side, and it doesn't go to a curb on the other side, so.
Whatever DPW says.
Yeah, right, I, I, my point was, my thought is, whatever's on the plan, in, unless, unless someone forces you to do something that we're, we don't have control of.
Yep.
Um, but, yeah.
Appreciate that.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that, all right, so, next, let me go back.
Because sidewalks are under their purview.
Right, let me go back to the photos, I don't think there's anything else, though, um.
Oh, I, I have a question, if you go up, you see where it's mulched over there?
Mm-hmm.
Does the new sidewalk have to go up to that retaining wall, or it could stop where it is right now?
No, I would say.
The length from your driveway to the end of the street.
Because if, as you see, it's in more and then curves.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, I don't think you have to bring the pavement up to the wall.
That's what he's asking.
Yeah, I'm asking if I have to, because that's just existing conditions.
It's where it is in the public.
Okay.
Way, if that's the.
I mean, this is a.
Whatever they're with it, again, that's gonna be a DPW, that'll be a DPW piece.
Yeah.
With that, because I'm not sure where your property line is with the public way is for the sidewalk.
I think to what Paul said, I don't think the board's gonna feel strongly one way or the other, whatever, you know, whatever you're required to do when you meet with DPW.
You want to go up to the wall, because it's just gonna be a grassy nightmare?
Yeah, it would be too much to maintain, yeah.
And just pave up to the wall, right.
I, I agree with you.
Whatever.
Because otherwise, it's, yeah, we're gonna put plantings there, or it's just gonna get overgrown.
So here's the other view of the mailbox, the backside of that fence that we talked about.
Crushed stone, I don't know.
Transformer pad, um.
You might want to do something around the mailbox, though.
There's not much, there's not much room there to do much of anything, but, uh, what, what is the, um, was there a, like an infiltration system, what's, 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 why is it covered on the other side of that parking lot there?
Oh, because there's supposed to be a storm and they seeded, and didn't want the seeds pushed away.
Oh, okay.
Solar panels, no.
Yeah.
Does that take care of the comments you put on the, um, other.
Hold on one second, I'm gonna go back to them in one second, I was just looking at all the rest.
I think we wrapped ourselves around it.
Yes, so the.
Anything that you requested specifically that we didn't go over?
Um, just double-check the notes, transformer, fence, nice and well. I mean, I have your email somewhere here too, let me.
Okay.
If you don't have your email, I can pull that up, because you had asked in the email specifically, so let me go to that, just so we don't miss anything.
I did bring that up.
I think, I've been doing this a long time.
There's always something, right?
The worst thing that can happen is you come back with a modified plan, and there's a question, so, I just want to make sure we knock everything out now, um, all right, let me see, your narrative request for modification. Electrical pole, fine, transformer, fine, dumpster needed to be relocated, fine, uh, ninety-nine-year lease, you're not allowed to put, that's fine, the fence at one seventy-nine fifty is train length, we talked about that, um, landscaping, um, you not want to plant a fruit trees, fine, just show them on the plan, I was asked to go to the next meeting, the office full of paperwork, okay. So that, that covers your, your list there, so then I just had the document that Paul and I did, and just to go over them, so we talked about sidewalks, and we talked about, I think the consensus was, we're okay pushing that further on down the line, whether it's fourteen or sixteen units in, um, fine with. Uh, fence and landscaping between one seventy-nine Pratt, we dealt with, um, the concrete sidewalks next to the building are concrete, fine, is, again, show, show these things on the plan. The fence, the, the new dumpster location, the fence behind the dumpster, just show that on the plan, backing out onto Pratt, you don't have to worry about, I think we can handle it, because it is technically a two-family, um, we can handle it that way, uh, I just have had a note.
Provide the dimensions and the setback, the setback from the street, as of the extra three feet, but if it meets it or not.
I had a note, just because we didn't know that twelve forty-six Frankfurt was two-three-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath units, bless you. Um, just because we didn't, I didn't know it was there, so, because that never, like I said, forty-six never came in front of us, so we didn't know anything about it, um, so I just made a note of it, it, again, I think the parking's fine, I don't know if the ZBA has to make the same determination, that's not for us to decide, but, um, I just wanted the board to know that three-bedroom units at forty-six Frankfurt, and then it's seven-one-bedroom, is that correct? And eleven, no.
Eleven.
Eleven-one bedrooms, five?
Five ones.
Five ones and the rest.
Eleven twos.
Doubles, and eleven.
Five ones, eleven twos.
Five ones, eleven twos and two threes.
Yeah.
Now, now that forty-six is part of it.
Yeah.
Um, and then I just had a note about the prohibition of forty-six Frankfurt, because our permit condition, when we do a modification, it's gonna have to say that forty-six is now part of it, because we expressly said in the other one that forty-six wasn't part of it. Um, the curb cut on Pratt, which we talked about, uh, fencing shown on the site plan between forty-six and the parking lot.
Yeah.
Um, oh, that's, yeah, that was the one that showed the fence going through that parking lot, for, because I think that was existing conditions, um, revised landscaping plan, I, I agree with Paul, if, if, if it's as simple as, if you can, hopefully digitally, so we have a copy, but if you can, even if you use paint and cross out stuff.
Yeah, if we're doing all the other changes, that's easy enough.
Make the right notes, um, so that we have something to vote on, that's fine, uh, remove parking space fourteen and unit five, so fourteen was this one, oh, you're not looking at my screen, hold on, sorry, um. Fourteen is the one in front of the transformer pad, and five is the one where the, um.
Pole.
Yeah, pole is.
Pole.
And then this one, which I didn't make note of, and then obviously you could add this as a space, for whatever reason it's not, it is, I mean, it is a space.
You know, whether or not, you have no designated visitor parking, I guess a concern would be, is our additional parking gonna be on the street, or people can use when they're not using the other spots, you'd be able to use them onsite, because that's gonna be a concern, and if eighteen units and you have even one visitors, and it's already.
Can, can I ask why, maybe was, on Paul's point, was it because of the ZBA decision, why you did two per uni, or can you, shouldn't the one-bedrooms just have one space? And then you make visitor parking, you leave your six visitor parking spaces?
I think right after the approval, it went to one and a half per bedroom.
We changed our zoning in twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, there was, there was a change, but at the time, those, they said, no, we want two spots per.
Multifamily development is still o- o- over a certain number? Oh, no, it's, no, it's not, it's one, one for one-bedroom, one and a half for two, two for three-bedroom, um.
So it could've been less, but we made.
Well, no, my question wasn't about the number of spaces, my question is, you're, you wrote all the unit designations, unit one, unit two, unit three, like, even though the spaces are required, it's not saying that specific unit has to use two spaces, it's saying you need this many spaces because, because you need visitor parking, you need, so that it, when we, when we used to be two per unit, the understanding was that you'll have some ones, you'll have some two-bedrooms, you'll have some three-bedrooms, and over the course of the project, you'll have space for visitor parking and everything else.
It was, it was always explained to me that it has to be two per unit, from what I understand.
Well, but, but the wording was.
Not for your end, from.
Right, but.
Right, the wording was two per unit, but.
The number of parking spaces, not saying.
Unit one has to have two spaces, right.
Spaces, so, think about that, because it's like you can have sick, you know, you know, the five ones can just be ones, and then you can have some just open spaces, they don't have to be designated and say, hey, when you have some visitors, they can park over here.
Are you marking the spaces anyway?
Um, we will need to, yes, once this is all finalized, what we're gonna do, we should, we need to mark them, so there's no issues.
The point to this conversation is, and I, Paul and I talked about it as a concern, that we didn't think about, because we don't usually see end products marked this way, is that, like I said, the understanding is, like, like, for instance, one-bedrooms would have one space, because that's most likely what they'll use, two-bedroom units might have two spaces for some of them, and you might have one space for some of them, and then at the end of it, you have six to eight visitor spaces that are labeled as visitor spaces.
Somebody's not gonna use all the spaces, it's like, one person, one student only needs the one.
Yeah, the one person living in one bedroom.
So you're kind of like, it makes up for it, just the number of spaces kind of like.
I have to see what's written in the HOA docs, because it's promised to the people that. Yeah, right, exactly. And that's, uh, you know, I was looking to see if Rob's still on there, but I don't see him.
I, I am.
Oh.
So what's a question about that?
We would designate the parking spots in the deed mark, so we certainly don't need to designate two parking spots for, uh, each of the one-bedrooms, and we can do one parking spot for each one, we haven't made a representation in the purchase and sale agreement, that each unit gets two spots, so, um, we would have flexibility with that.
It's okay, it's okay if you do, I'm just thinking the project's bet, more beneficial if you find four or five visitor spaces, I mean, because I, I, I'm a, I'm a real estate appraiser by trade, I, I, I'm in condo developments all the time, and I can tell you, it's very unusual if you don't have some designated visitor spots, um, granted, this isn't a gigantic project, but, um, it, it might make sense, so I'll leave, leave that up to you, but it's, it's, it's something you might want to think about, um, because, because I don't, I don't think that there's anything requiring you to say, unit one needs two spaces.
Did speak with a neighbor a couple days ago that was outside, so that was just a question, like, where the visitors gonna go? Because it's already, you see parking along the street, so.
I mean, some may park on the street, I don't know.
Some may park on the street, but you should accommodate, try to accommodate something onsite.
I think what ends up happening to some.
Now just have all these open spaces, say, don't park there, because it's in my deed, and you never use it, but you can't use it either.
Exactly. Yes, I mean, someone comes to visit, I think they're gonna take a loop through the parking lot first, and if, if there's spaces that either aren't marked or marked visitor, they'll park there.
Yeah.
So if you can find them, great, if you can't, again, I concede that they, that they'll have to find a spot to park, but I think that that was, that was always, that's always our intention, when we do a multifamily project, that, yes, even then, in, prior to our new zoning ordinance, two per unit was required, but it wasn't gonna be every unit needs two spaces.
That was a misunderstanding, because I was saying, we need visitor parking, they said, nope, you have exactly two per unit, that's what was approved, so, again, going back, some bad advice, and, you know, I think, if, from what Rob said, we may be able to accomplish this, or at least a few, which would be great.
We have the number of spaces that's there, which is good.
I mean, even if you just take, even if you just take the ones, you have what, five ones?
Yeah.
And you make the five ones one space, which is understandable for the five ones.
Makes sense.
And you have five visitor parking spaces, because you, you make those up, if one or two of those needs to use a visitor spot for them, you still have three more visitor spaces, so, just, just a thought, and again, I, I, that's not part of the permit condition, that's just a real life.
I appreciate it, thing that.
And where you can say, you know, pretty much the open spaces, go check along the back, we might have some five or six spaces in the back versus, it might be the more difficult, random, all over the place, but if you have a kind of an area of kind of like, okay, these are kind of ups for grabs when they're available, would be, we do the same, if you have larger condominium developments, two hundred units, whichever, we go by how many parking spaces, not designate every parking space for every unit.
I, I mean, I didn't get as far into, oh, I guess they're not even on here anyway, well, I mean, yeah, it's not a big deal, that's the other thing, that, so the as-built reference, all the exclusive use area patios, none of those were on the original site plan, which, you know, again, in the grand scheme of things, isn't a big deal, but there was a, there was a sidewalk that was supposed to run down basically two-thirds, a third of the building on each side, and now they're separated, but.
It just, as we were going along, it just didn't work out that way, and especially going all the way to the other side, because we have the hatch for the, um, uh, as you go along between forty-six and fifty, there's the hatch for the fire, uh, where we have the sprinkler system that goes right by.
This one, the utility room?
To the left of unit five.
To the left.
You'll see there's a.
Oh, right here, we're at unit four.
Yeah, you see unit five.
Yep, unit five's right, yeah.
To the steps, you'll see, right over there, to the left of the steps, you'll see some, it, it looks like a window well, but it's.
Oh, it says bulkhead.
Yeah, that's a bulkhead right over there, which came out, and then we couldn't go all the way around, but we wanted to connect the two sides, so, and then also with the way the water was running, it was, you know, there were so many changes that happened during construction, that it's, you know, everything came right at the end, because that's when all of that was completed, at the end of the project.
So, so can I throw this out there, Paul, because I, 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 I gather from them that they're not going back to the engineer that did the original plan, which, for the sake of argument, if, if, for the sake of argument, if they provide us with the, the revised landscaping plan that they mark up.
And an engineered site plan, some, I don't care who stamps it, but something.
Well, what I was gonna say is, if they take this plan, because this is a, this is a, it's a, it's a survey plan, so they still measure, so if on this survey plan, they show actual dimensions of parking spaces, as well as all the changes we talked about today, is that sufficient? Because this, this is a stamped plan, he is a, he is a surveyor, um, which means he can, he can do the actual onsite measurements on the ground and say, you know, like, this parking spot that we talked about on the top, that, near the, the, the property entrance, they can say how far that is, they can mark up this, again, it needs to be corrected first, and then it needs to be revised.
I'm okay with that, if, if any other board members have any.
No, my point was, I think they can solve it, my initial issue was.
I just want to, I want a dimensionally accurate plan.
Yes.
Amanda has her.
Yes, no, no, I.
Doesn't show the aisle widths, anything on it, it's like, this is where the issue, it doesn't show the, even the driveway entrance, um, for the back parking lot.
Amanda's got her hand raised too.
I mean, this is.
I think, um, I think we've made a lot of exceptions so far for this project, especially considering the amount of times that we've discussed it over the years, and it makes sense to me that we get a proper site plan, because we've already approved one, and it wasn't followed, and now, I mean, it's like, we just did, we just did the site plan approval again, in, in this past hour or so, how much, our time is valuable, it's. We're all volunteers here, we care very much about the city of Pittsburgh, and that's why we pore over these plans, and we go over the details, and we want things to be a certain way, and to have someone not look at the approved plan and see the discrepancies in them, and just, and, and, and we, we just have to fix it, because people are counting on us now, and now, and now we're not, now we're just gonna take not a proper site plan and approve that, and, like, I'm, I'm starting to question the, like, why have a planning board if this is, if this is what we do? So I am of the opinion that the least this applicant could do is give us a proper site plan to modify after we've already approved a project that hasn't been adhered to. That, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Amanda. Anybody else? Alex. Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I agree with Amanda on this situation, um, you know, a couple of discrepancies is one thing, but a completely different site plan, which is what we've received here, it, I. which is what we've received here, I, I'm not gonna say it's underhanded, but it definitely does not bring a sense of trust with, with the developers and in the situation. Only, my only concern and why I'll probably vote to approve is because there's families waiting to move in, and kids trying to get into, get ready to get into school, and needing a place to live, so. But I'm not happy with the way this is playing out.
Okay. I guess I'll go.
This, this is Pete.
Yes, Peter.
I, I do wanna, I do wanna say I do agree with Amanda, and I do agree with Alex. I've been sitting here watching this computer now for, for over an hour, going over this plan again and again, and we've talked about this so many times, and I agree wholeheartedly with Amanda. I want to see a site plan submitted to the board, a proper site plan, so we can, so we can vote on it. This is kind of tiring to go over this, and in all the minutia that we've been going over, it's just too, too much.
All right.
This is Alin. I, I just want to echo what the rest of the board has said. It's, it's honestly, it's beyond frustrating to have spent time to go through all of these details, to have those details ignored, whether it was willfully, or intentionally, or by mistake, and now to sit here and put us in a position where we're creating a precedent that we have conditions that need to be followed, but if you don't follow the conditions, we'll try to help you, so, because you have people who need to move in, and people who need to go to school. So it's just really frustrating to spend the amount of time that we do on these type of projects, and to have our recommendations ignored, and to put us in this position where we have to approve something, and we have to bend over and change how we do things, just so we don't come out as the bad guys. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All very well said. I would concur with that. What I, what I would be proposing here is the submission of a revised site plan as a condition. If we, if we do recommend any release of the, say, the looking for the ni, like, the COs, that it be submitted, it's, after that, there's no more COs until we get the site plan and an approved condition scenario, like, within the next, like, sixty days. Type of thing, I mean, I'm just putting that out there for discussion, purposes like that. Again, we have no authority to release the COs, that's still up to the building commissioner, there may be other implications of why, they can or they can't do that aspect, but to, we want to like, go over all the changes that are expected to be on this plan, so we're not doing this again. That's why we're doing in some detail now, we're taking so good notes.
Yes.
In regards to that. Also, we're looking at the modification of the, of the site plan itself. There's, let's see, number two, it says the number of units shall not exceed sixteen, multifamily units, we'll be changing that to eighteen, and the modification, adding in the two, three bedroom units. There's a few things that you've already have done, approved parking easements, and long-term lease agreements, we've already done that and recorded. Sewer connection sidewalk, I'm just trying to think of any other changes in the plan. So that was my, condition number two. You're gonna add eleven is landscape activities area to be provided, so you're gonna do that, label it on the plan. Stoops in front of you, it's, you did the retaining wall on fourteen, condition. Any onsite light, sight lighting is to be Doc Scott compliant, we've complied with that. Sixteen is replace the concrete sidewalk along Frankfurt per the submitted plan, which does shows putting in the granite curbing pieces and stuff, too. That's gonna be DPW, the board can look at that and saying, condition that based on number of occupants with the COs, and hold that up, to make sure that condition gets done. Seventeen's construction accordance with submitted elevations and landscaping plans, so that would be the revised, that's what we'll be looking for. Condominium documents to be submitted for planning board review and approval, and shall prohibit storage of unregistered motor vehicles, long-term vehicle storage, automotive repair. Now, that's the condominium docs that have been reviewed, but that's also the, where we just got recommendations, because the site plan doesn't match that, to not approve it until that time. So I'm not sure where that leaves you, if that's the case.
Well, it, we can't sell any of the units unless we get the condominium documents approved.
Is there anything maybe you can work out with, you need to talk to the city legal regarding any language in there regarding.
I, I think that.
Subsequent revised site plan, or subsequent, or any, subsequent to a revised site plan, or. You know, that's referenced, or how it's referenced?
Well, the site, we can make any changes that the city requires us to make relative to the condominium documents. If we end up, if you, we do something different with parking, or whatever else, we, we can change that, but we, I can only convey units if we get the condominium documents approved. And for me, there's no downside risk in approving the condominium documents, because you're, you're going to have control over the remaining COs.
Was there a revision, or any prohibition to revising the condo docs, once they've been recorded?
No, so specifically in my condominium documents, we retain a right to, the developer retains the right to amend the condominium documents to comply with any and all requirements of the municipal boards, which would be what you guys would, would be. So I, I mean, from the condominium document standpoint, I don't see any downside risk from your remaining issues that need to get controlled. We are going to have to come back to you with a site plan, and if it's not okay, you're not going to release any further certificates of occupancy, so I, I, I think you have plenty of control over this project. It's, it's, you know, it, it's a little bit odd in that, that most times you, a city doesn't, well, most times, I guess, it is subdivided, you'd, you'd come back, and you'd make minor modifications. We didn't do that. We, we then submitted a plan that is different. I, I fully understand that the developer should not have done that, but any control that you seek over the project, you have by failure to issue certificates of occupancy going forward. And it's not like we're, you know, and any other issues that are with the building department are gonna be addressed, so I, I, you certainly have every right in the world to enforce your requirements and not waive them. There's nothing that, in selling these units, that would prevent you from making sure that we do comply with what your requirements are, and you have that authority to do that.
I guess a question out there, also, I'm not sure if the board can answer, but put this out to the board, whether a condition would be to submit the revised condo documents, based upon any modifications.
I mean, quite honestly, I never, I never understood why the ZBA and, and even us had a permit condition that it was some satisfactory legal review of the condo docs, because it's some, it's somewhat inconsequential in the grand scheme of things, what is written in the condo docs, other than they don't contradict anything in a site plan, and they don't create any other issues. So it's really up to you, I don't particularly.
And we, according to town council, we've complied with those requirements at, at this time. I, I, if somebody asks me what I do in an elevator, I tell them I represent builders and developers of condominium associations, because I do more of that than I do anything else in the real estate sphere. I've never had a requirement in any decision that the, the documents needed to be reviewed by the, the, a planning board. Typically, what would happen is that the developer goes to get his CO, and the, either planning board, the planner, or the building department would say, you know, look, you have fifteen different changes than what is on the ASBIL, you need to go to the planning board, but that, that has nothing to do with the condominium documents. You have that authority by not issuing the, the CO, either now or in the future.
Okay. Does any board member have any concern or exception regarding that?
I just, I just can't imagine what would be in there that would be important.
That would, I know it was just a recommendation from our legal, but they just went through and said all the condo docs look great, look fine up to this point, until they understood that there's gonna be a site plan modification, but I'm not sure that there's anything substantial in the site plan that would change that?
No, and like I told you, unless, for whatever reason, I know the document we got from legal had all the permit decisions attached, I, I mean, unless.
If anything, it corrects it?
I was gonna say, unless it has to have permit decisions attached, which I don't think it, I've never seen condo docs that do.
Oh, what they do is our condominium documents reference the, the, your, your decisions.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you can revise, if you record them now, as long as you can revise them when we record, because we're gonna have to record a new special, a new site plan, and special permit. This was a special permit and site plan, no, just site plan, that's right, the ZBA did the parking spaces.
Not recorded, but you wouldn't want this recorded.
Yes, yeah. So, so my point was, they'll have to reference site plan decision, or at least.
You might want to add something to the, on the right, the condo doc side, and subject to, like, any other modification. Well, you already have that anyway, in there, modification, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I.
You might be fine.
Yeah, I think the condo docs are inconsequential in the grand scheme of things.
Okay. Number nineteen, decorative vinyl cast aluminum, aluminum or wrought iron not chain link fence to be provided between the Seventh Day Adventist Church property and fifty Frankfurt Street site. And are we just eliminating that modification?
I think the, I think the, I think the.
Or just maintain a fence between two properties?
Exactly. I think it should say that there's a delineation between the two, so you don't have parking conflicts. He was already saying, that when contractors there, they just drive over, which means you can just drive over it. So there should be a, there should be a fence there.
Okay. I just don't want to be in conflict for whatever happens on the other side if it gets changed. Which side is the property, the fence on right now?
It's on that property.
It's on.
It's on one seventy-nine, because it's not.
Oh, it's, it's in the lease anyway, so it's still there.
But it's on the property that belongs to one seventy-nine.
I believe so.
Oh, it definitely is, because that, it is, because that whole area is the lease agreement.
Okay.
That whole parking area is the ninety-nine year lease.
Yeah.
And it's on the other side of it, so it has to be on one seventy-nine.
So as long as there's, you know, wording in there for maintenance, I don't know.
Maintenance. Our luxury apartments to be completed no later than six months after the issuance of the first occupancy permit for the project, so we could, typically, that would include, like, the sidewalk piece. So we, if the board's amenable to this, if, looking at, it'd be six months, if the first occupancy now, then it's only six months to the spring.
My, I was gonna say, my only concern is that you, you, if they, if they have to close on units, and then do the sidewalk, that's middle of winter, so you'd need the beginning of spring, even if you sell, let's, like I said, you sell X amount of units, then you do the sidewalk, then you sell the remainder of units, you have to have good weather to do the sidewalks, so it's gotta be sometime, maybe.
May winter before it starts freezing, maybe, like, no, like, two months, three months, like, November or something like that to get it done.
Well, I mean, if you get it done in November, it's not an issue.
Yeah, because then if it's right after that, you're gonna have, be in the freezing weather.
Right.
You know, I'm just saying, I just, I really just.
We don't know how quickly you can, can get it done, but after the nine units, I mean, is the board okay with maybe saying, what, eighteen?
Yeah, yeah, that was fair.
Twelve, whatever.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I wrote, so, so, can I, can I read you what I wrote, and you tell me if you agree with it before I make the motion?
Uh, I just want to finish going through, I think that was, that was the last one.
It's tied to that, but okay.
That was the last one, so it would be looking, okay, to make these modifications. So I just wanted to go over them.
Sure, so aside from what you just said for the modifications, it's specifically tied to the recommendation for the building commissioner? Because we can't make a binding recommendation to the building commissioner, because that's not our job. My suggestion was to say something to the effect of, recommend to the building commissioner that if he deems it appropriate, that it's okay to release up to, but no more than nine occupancy permits on these units.
I don't, I just have a quick, I just was putting that on the building commissioner like that. It's just like, it's like, I, I don't even want to talk about the building commissioner piece of that. It's just like, the submission, submit a revised site plan prior to release of, like, the tenth or the ninth, after the ninth, it's like, release up to nine, but after, after that, we need.
That's exactly what I just said, and that's.
Don't put in the building commissioner in it, it's like, it's about recommendation to him. It's just like, we're just gonna state that, it's just subject to, you know, withholding, withholding any further COs until we get a revised site plan, that's it. He can release it.
So how, so how do you word that on paper?
And the recommendation part is just, a recommendation isn't in the decision, it's just kind of like a.
Okay.
As an aside.
Right, but, but we have to take, but we have to take a vote on it, so that he knows it's the majority of the board, and not one or two people saying this, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So my point was, I make a recommendation, not, not a decision. We make a recommendation that Chantel can convey to the building commissioner, and we vote on it as a board, that, with that wording, that's what I was saying. And then he can say, there's still things in my purview that haven't been done, so I'm not comfortable with it, and that's fine. If the building commissioner decides, I don't, I, I have other things to think of other than what the planning board is thinking of, no problem.
Okay, I just want that to be separate from the modification aspect, aspect.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But.
It can be like a consensus thing, separate, it's not gonna be written in the modification.
Right.
Okay.
I got no problem with that. And, and then the, to, 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 so, okay, so why don't we do that now, then, okay? To, to, to make it clear?
Is the board okay with that?
This is just a vote on whether it, we believe as a board, it's okay to release the occupancy permits so people can move into these units, if the building commissioner says it's okay.
I would second that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so just to reiterate, the way I would word it is, we're making a recommendation to the building commissioner, commissioner, that if he deems it appropriate, that the planning board believes it's okay to release up to, but no more than nine occupancy permits. No more than nine certificates of occupancy to be released until the site plan is modified, and the planning board has been satisfied further. And then I'll get to the sidewalk in a second.
Okay.
So that's that motion.
Think about that. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, and roll call, Amanda?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Okay. It's not binding, but that's the best we can do. So, and then the second one was, we, we, the planning board recommends to DPW and engineering that if they deem it appropriate to allow curb cut for the two spaces at forty-six Frankfurt Street, and to acknowledge to them that the planning board is okay to move the sidewalk replacement in our permit further down, but it must be completed before the issuance of the fifteenth occupancy permit, which is fourteen units done, like we talked about.
Yes. Is the board.
Second.
Okay, amenable to that, okay. That with a second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next. Submit a revised site plan, and landscaping plan. I was gonna say, I'm wondering when you can accomplish this, it's gonna like, no, it's pretty much no, prior to the release of the tenth CO.
Yeah, I mean, I will start on this tomorrow. I mean, I'm not gonna waste a second.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
So it's like we're allowing to, if we, if they can get the nine, but withhold, it's like, any more until we get the revised site plan?
The, the one side note I will make to that is, Chantel, you will have to make a note somewhere that both those numbers, the nine occupancy permits, and more importantly, the fourteenth for the sidewalks, there's no, there's, there's no written control over that. We just took a non-binding recommendation, so you'll have to, we'll have to make a note of it somehow in the system that.
Oh, no, we can put that in the decision.
No, no, eventually we can. I mean, between now and then, if for whatever reason this thing never happens, we just took an, a non-binding vote, and I guess it doesn't matter, because if it never happens, it's a violation of the site plan.
I want to, here's the other aspect, this is a modification, well, actually, it's not a special permit.
No, it's just a site plan.
Right, there's not a twenty day appeal period, that's. Right. There's not a twenty day appeal period. That's what I was concerned about going like, well, you're gonna have to wait for that.
Yeah, you don't have to wait for the twenty days.
We still need to write it.
Yeah. Write it. We'll have to write it. We'll have to stamp it with the clerk and.
With that. So we have, so we have that. Any other piece? We also have modifications to the current plan, which is obviously the description and the number of units modifying it from sixteen to eighteen. We're okay with the thirty-six parking spaces versus the thirty-seven. Again, you'll happen, we have to go back to ZBA about clarifying what that's forty-one number is. Piece on it, but you do have two per unit per the original ZBA permit.
Yep.
Plan. In regards to that, we will modify number nineteen, which was about the decorative vinyl fence, to just say maintain a fence between the two properties. Is there anything else I'm missing? I don't think so. Okay.
No, I think that covers it all.
We clarified more in our discussions, just what's to be on the site plan that we would, we are okay with and.
Okay.
I'm gonna, at some point before I end this, I'm gonna email that picture to Chantel. If it helps you, you can ask her for a copy of it, because I don't have your email address. I think you can watch the meeting and look at it fifty times, so I think you'll be okay, but.
I have three and a half pages of notes.
Right.
Hopefully I can read it and write it.
All right. And if everybody okay with that provision, is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Those in favor say aye, those opposed say no.
Can I just, for the purposes of clarification of the meeting minutes, that, did you make that motion or am I making that motion? Because you just asked for a second.
I will, I guess I made the motion.
I just, I just wanted to be clear, because that, you know how the meeting minutes get.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. Okay.
And a roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Any further questions?
Just if I could just say one last thing. I just want to thank everybody as when the board members who are not here on Zoom, I couldn't really see where they were, were mentioning, you know, their frustrations on it, and I completely understand it. I also do a lot of volunteer work and spend many hours a week on it, and I can understand it gets frustrating. It's never, it was never my attention, intention, or any of the people that have worked with me to waste anybody's time whatsoever. I would say, being in a new town, although we've been here for three years, a lot of things weren't pretty wrong on this project. And it was never the intention to do anything not right or not fair to you guys at any which way. And I think it shows in the final product. And, you know, I really appreciate it and looking forward to do, doing more projects here as well. Thank you.
You carried yourself very well today, too. It's a frustrating situation.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All doing our best.
Yeah.
We all want to see the outcome, because we all want to see it's gonna be an excellent outcome. So we want to see, again, we want to see you get there. There's just some of these administrative pieces that need to get worked out.
Because this is a public hearing, we have to officially continue it, right?
No, we can modify, we just modify.
Oh, we modify, okay. So we don't, we don't have to do anything. Okay. That's, that's right.
No, we just said sub, subject.
Because the plan, the plan will come in and then we'll just sign off on the plan.
The plan will come out, so we need a plan to approve. So either we're gonna approve it or we're not gonna, but we approve it as, as we've discussed. We want a new plan submitted as.
Okay.
Paul, I've been talking about planning board stuff since noon today. I'm a little, I'm a little done with all this, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. For the next.
Appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
You too. Wait, did we approve the condo docs?
It is.
Like I said, by, by, by doing the approval, we don't have to do anything. I mean, oh, we just have to, so we get, so it, we can take it, we can take an individual motion if you want, just, just to approve the condo docs. I'll make a motion to, to, to approve based upon our legal counsel recommendation that the condo docs as written are fine.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And Rob, the only caveat there is that if any, obviously if any revisions need to be made, just, just let us know.
Okay. Thank you very much. You guys are great. Thank you. Bye.
Make sure they can get, get through that hurdle. Sorry. We are on to other business. Revolutionary clinics update?
Yes. They said they did not have all of their documentation together to submit for this meeting. I'm gonna have to follow up with them, because they said they do it for September and my deadline is tomorrow and I haven't heard anything yet, so.
Ah, and this is for the modification, because it's.
Correct.
Okay.
So they said they would be in attendance at this meeting to talk more about odor mitigation, but there's nobody here as far as I know, so.
Okay.
There you are.
I told Paula, too, that apparently, apparently the Worcester Business Journal is doing another article on them. And they actually said that, that Eric, that I believe it was Eric, said he was gonna come, try and come tonight, because he was trying to get in touch with Rev Clinics. And I was under the impression they were gonna be here, but it's not that they needed to be. But, anyway, so apparently there's another article about odor mitigation and Rev Clinics, and we talked briefly about it. I advised him to call you, Liz, Paula, and Sam. So I don't know who he called, but.
Right.
Okay. Our next item is native sun informing of minor changes in operations.
Yeah, he's here. Charlie's here.
Charlie should be here. He said he was going to be.
Yep, he's, he's been waiting patiently. Charlie, I remembered your name.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. This is Charlie Young, Chief of Staff for One Forty Industrial Road LLC.
All right.
Fantastic. What are the minor changes you'd like to inform us about?
Sure thing. So first off, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and the other board members this evening. I submitted a memo that really, I think, runs through, you know, the timeline of events and, you know, our request to the board, since we submitted our most recent form of intent. And I'm happy to read that memo. If people didn't get a chance, you know, I can kinda focus on the meat and potatoes of it, if that would be helpful.
I can pull it up while you're talking, Charlie, but if you want to give kind of the, the gist of it.
Yeah, sure. So we're here today to respectfully request that the board reconsider their response to our recent form of intent submission. You know, as always, our team is committed to working closely with the board and all authorities having jurisdiction to ensure that all aspects of this modification meet the standards of the board, the municipality, the Cannabis Control Commission, the State of Massachusetts. And, you know, in general, we appreciate your willingness to review this request. I'm here tonight, you know, making myself available for any questions or to facilitate any further discussions you may have. So I'll dive right into it. Basically, you know, we submitted our form of intent to, you know, go through the process on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. And on June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, a response was issued to us that indicated that, you know, the municipality had ruled that we would need to execute a major special permit modification to execute the initiative described in our form of intent. And so in an effort to gain additional understanding of the response, while also trying to provide additional clarification to the board, I met with Sean, excuse me, Chantel Fleck, Principal Planner, on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And during this meeting, Chantel and I reviewed our form of intent, you know, and talked about some of the things that may not have been clear in that form of intent. And, you know, during that meeting, Chantel advised that we, you know, draft this memo that you have before you today. It's part of the meeting packet. So we can jump all the way to page two and I'll start actually reading. So we intend outfit rooms constructed and signed off by the municipality to confirm all required codes were met during the certificate of occupancy process. Because of the economic conditions in the cannabis market, these rooms, which were initially permitted as cannabis grow rooms, are better suited to contain packaging operations, allowing for more efficient packaging in larger climate controlled, odor mitigated spaces. As a Cannabis Control Commission licensed facility, we will be required to outfit all these spaces with all the same security systems, including video surveillance, access control, burglary alarm, and maintain all the same security standards since, that we have since constructing our facility in twenty twenty-two. So ultimately, we believe these changes will reduce the available cannabis space for flowering cannabis, for any type of cannabis in this facility, while also allowing for more efficient packaging and transportation operations, leading to an overall decrease in both the production as well as the storage of finished inventory at our facility. So one of our main goals through our, you know, development initiative is to realize shipping efficiencies that will help us reduce the number of deliveries coming into and out of the site.
What's the square?
In the.
Change.
Sorry?
Square footage change.
So I'll keep reading. In the municipality's form of intent response, the requested activity was described as building an expansion or of existing marijuana establishment by an experienced operator in the same location as existing special permit, not increasing the gross square footage of such facility by more than ten percent. And I wanted to clarify explicitly, we have no intentions of expanding the existing gross square footage of the facility by a single square foot. There's no intended expansion of the facility. The gross square footage of the facility will remain precisely what it is currently.
Charlie, this is all inside the existing envelope of the building?
Correct.
And the use, and the use isn't changing at all, just what you plan on using some rooms for?
What you.
Correct.
You're converting.
So there's, so I think there's been a major miscommunication here between you and the building commissioner and the planning office, because it's an existing use, it's an existing permitted use. The use isn't changing in type of use, in size.
Just the, just the canopy, but it's actually being reduced. So I guess if anything, is it looking to the board to be like, looking at it, seeing this is major or minor? Okay.
Exactly.
So it's, okay.
And basically, you know, I, the whole punchline boils, boils down to we're moving an already existing approved operation into a space originally intended for cultivation. So we're just like changing how we're using certain cultivation space. And we believe it's in a way that will be, you know, more favorable, less nuisance providing to the town.
Number of, well, what is the change in square footage that you're proposing to use? What's the?
You're talking about canopy size, Paul?
No, just square, well.
There's no square footage change.
I understand the canopy size. What is the square footage you're using for packaging now? What is the area space? We're saying, is it a two thousand foot space or is it, what's the, what's the?
I don't, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I think I could calculate that, you know, before the clock strikes midnight. I would guess probably.
How big are we talking?
I want to say approximately three thousand to five thousand square feet that had been intended for cultivation space is becoming packaging space.
Well, this, will this change the number of employees?
Uh, no. The intention is to outfit it with automated packaging. So we will increase our headcount, but not as dramatically as if we had outfitted this space with cultivation employees. So.
So that'd just be something to look at, is look, is just making sure that there's adequate parking. You want to look at it as a minor change, we could look at it as a minor.
Charlie, we spoke, are any changes to delivery areas supposed to happen in regards to this modification?
There are. We're still kind of finalizing that, to be honest, but the intention would be to bring the deliveries for this portion of the business to this portion of the building. So this portion of the, the building is back towards, you know, the backside of our building, which is close to the electrical easement in between, you know, our property and the Monticic School. So it's kind of a, you know, discreet area, if you will, that we anticipate increasing traffic slightly, too.
Is that the existing loading dock area?
Uh, no. There's a, there's proper loading docks on both sides of this facility. It's used to be a warehouse for storing, you know, furniture. So there, there's docks on both sides that we kind of like, you know, adjusted for our use, but maintained. So this would be a new delivery area.
Just, just to, to wrap my head around it, because I'm reading from the form of intent right now. Theoretically, with this change, you're producing less product, you're just packaging it in more area.
But also increasing their del.
Right, right, right. But it's saying, it's saying they're, they're, they're changing flower room eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen and renaming them warehouse one, processing one, processing two, processing three. So the implication there is the amount of product you're producing is slightly less. You just need more space to process everything.
I would say the potential, you know, these rooms are just built and empty, so currently they have no impact on our capacity to produce products. Outfitting these spaces would allow us to package it, package the products we do produce more efficiently.
What I'm trying, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at is, it seems like, it's just, what?
Will they be bringing outdoor product into, for packaging? Not just what they're growing?
Are, are you bringing product from other facilities into package, or is it all what you grow at the facility?
Uh, currently, we only package what we grow at our facility. We're licensed to bring in products from other locations, but it's not something that we currently do.
And, and, and part of like reading this form of intent, I, I just, I can't understand why it would trigger anything in front of us, minor or major. Meaning, the, again, use isn't changing, size isn't changing, canopy isn't changing, nothing's changing other than the names of rooms. So I can't understand why, unless the expectation was, and it sounds like from his letter, that there was a thought that the size of the building was changing, but it's not. We approved the whole building when we did the approval. It's just the names of the rooms. So if, if it's a question of what does the planning board consider, I don't, I don't, I can't, I fail to see how this is in front of us at all. It seems like an inconsequential change that means nothing in the grand scheme of the regular special permit.
So regardless, we may have a different opinion, but this is what the notice of intent, I mean, this, we're gonna read what the building commissioner said. And if we're just determining if it's major or minor at this point, they could come in, we can look at a minor.
But it sounds like, in reading his letter of intent, it almost sounds like it's, he's treating it as a new use. He's requiring host community agreement, letter of approval from the mayor's office, relevant permits from the board of health, site plan from the building, from the fit for planning board.
Oh, I see. So this, I was gonna say, this provision is originally in our ordinance for what we called experienced operators when we had, say, medical uses and then wanted to switch to like adult, and it was pretty much the same thing. And we said, well, as long as you're an experienced operator.
But that's a new facility with an experienced operator.
Not even a new facility. It was still growing it, just under the different license, kind of like thing. And then we said all you needed was site plan approval and wanted to do that, because we already had a special permit. We just were trying to integrate the medical. Since that time, the city has updated its ordinance that we just have one license, just an ME, to cover everything in that regard. So it's not a separate piece. So I'm just seeing that aspect being pulled out here. Maybe, you know, when you were looking to, when they're starting to permit a different use, but this is not a different use. Packaging was already part of, we already approved them as a manufacturer. So you've, you've approved of, I believe, like MPM, right? And grower.
It's not even a diff, it's not even a question of that. It's not a change in the building envelope. It's not a change in what they're doing. It's not a change in.
It's a change within the, within the site.
They could have put a sign over the door that said warehouse one and a sign over another.
However, if there's a change potentially for occupancy with dealing with, you know, number of employees and. However, if there's a change potentially for occupancy with dealing with, you know, number of employees and site like that, then there's, then typically we could look at that as minor, look at the review to make sure what you're doing. Cause you're just, it's a change in operations satisfies the parking requirements.
I think that would be.
Security aspect. So we can just look at it like that.
I think that would be, right. I think that would be worst case scenario is you say, okay, what if, you know, packaging product in a different area changes the number of employees or parking? But, but again, at the same time, when we did the original approval, we approved the same building envelope that's there now. It's just like he said, they're not using the rooms. They're empty.
True, but would you change in operations, if you're gonna change your employees and stuff like that, then, to that degree?
What I was, what my point was, the rooms are empty. If they were full of flower, they have employees. Or if they're warehouse, they'd have more employees. Either way, they'd have more employees, which we included when we did the parking on the site originally. So anyway, I'm, I'm just saying, I, 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 I fail, I don't understand why this is in front of us. That's all I'm saying.
We can ask another question. This is the first time I've seen it.
So i- if it makes, if it makes the applicant's life easier, I am more than willing to say it's a minor modification. But even doing that, can we vote, can we vote on a minor modification now? Does it have to go to next meeting? I mean, major, I know we have to advertise.
No, I think we can vote on it.
Yeah, I think that's what you've done before.
Now, and also they know what to actually submit in regards to that.
Right.
And then we, and then we could, we can explore going through all the other things about like host agreement. Because those are, those are typically what you would ask for, for your first permit for cannabis, medical marijuana.
I genuinely wonder if Felix is aware that this is an existing operation. I don't, and I don't say that as a fault. I know he's new. Like it reads like.
It's okay. We don't have to go, we're just gonna, we'll just explore it. We'll talk about it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like.
Yep. Okay, we don't have to, we'll just, we'll look at, we'll consider what you've put forward. And if the board feels comfortable enough with that, since I think it's just minor and operations, we'll review what is they need to do. We've done minor, we've done minor revisions before when it's moving condensers or anything like that. So this is like minor in that regard and looking at whether or not bring information regarding what you're doing. And again, pretty much employees and like you mentioned, security, anything else that's gonna potentially change or increase in activity. So we just know it's all been addressed.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I, I do agree with the, with the vice chair. I, I believe this is a minor change in operations. It's my, I view it more as an adaption to the changing conditions of the industry. And I really don't see any problem with it.
Okay. Anybody else have any question or about that? We commit, we can vote that this is a minor modification as per.
Yeah, so we have to take the vote that it's minor first and then determine a minor? I, I would put.
I appreciate the communication. Sorry to interrupt, but I just want to say thanks for reaching out and writing a letter and letting us know what you want to do. Thank you.
Of course.
I would put forward the suggestion that it's a minor modification. I would vote to approve it as minor modification.
We're not approving it.
No, I would vote to approve the understanding that it's a minor modification.
Yes, yes, correct. And is there a second to that? Then the second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. All right. Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie, I'll be in touch to start that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate everyone's willingness to review our request. And as always, just want to reiterate that Native Sun is always available for any questions or discussion you or any community members may have. So thank you all for the time, especially on this late night.
Charlie, while you're there, just very quickly, over the last month, I've gotten a couple complaints about smell in your area. Some from the industrial park, from some of your industrial park of butters. If we keep getting complaints, we're gonna treat you like we've treated Revolutionary Clinics, where we have to get into, you know, how you, how you're abiding by your odor mitigation plan. And, you know, Rev just had to do all new carbon filters and all that stuff. So keep it in mind.
Understood. I appreciate that. And we have been invited and been participating in the group organized by, I believe it was the Board of Health for the, you know, our corner of town, basically, to talk about strategies and ways to, you know, respond quickly to nuisance reports from town members in our area. We do have the dump in our area. We do have the wad, the, excuse me, the paper manufacturer in our area.
No, this, no, the smell was you. I was there. It, you got closer as you got closer to your building. It was definitely you.
Understood. Yeah, not trying to say that they caused the nuisance, just trying to say that, you know, we're actively engaged in trying to, you know, maintain our standing as good neighbors.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Yep.
And I'm not seeing in here, but we were supposed to have meeting minutes from last May?
I, I can pull them up.
Do we? Not? Or did I forget to put them on? I'm sorry. I may have forgotten.
It's, it's fine. So we only have one. Oh, they're not in.
No, they're not here.
Yeah, I, I think I forgot. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I will get them for next meeting.
The only one we did was May 23.
We got May of 2023 coming.
Okay.
We've got, I think she's wrapping up December of 2023.
We got June of 24.
June of 2024. And then you might be working on July after that. So we'll have a minimum of three sets.
For next.
Maybe four for next meeting. So we'll have, we'll be getting all caught up.
My bad.
Close out last.
It's, it's been a bit of a hectic month. And then we still had that first agenda item for Franklin Road.
Thank you.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you remembered. That's why I said at the beginning, because I wasn't gonna remember.
So we have in front of us that, that minor site plan for the electric avenue use, the change in use that we've received. Not the sufficient information to make a determination on even if it's major. I think we're looking that it might be major because he said, I think he said 60 people, that it would be 10 parking spaces. So from minor versus major on the change of use.
And we don't have parking.
We don't have regardless, either one of the two, we do not have the, the plan, the layout of what all of the uses are, that there's enough parking being available with all of the uses going on in the, in the plaza. Also, we've identified some, some issues with some of the traffic flow in the plaza that need to be addressed as well, which I don't know that really is incumbent upon the applicant as much as the property owner. So, and that's gonna have to also be, you know, party to this. So at this juncture, we've continued it up to this date. There was an extension for the minor because of going, getting close to the 90 day mark. We don't have sufficient information. The board could look to just to deny the minor modification at this point.
Well, to, to your point, I don't think we have an alternative.
I don't think we have an alternative.
We don't have him here to sign an extension. We have to, we have to turn it down. And this is, this is not a special permit, so there isn't a two-year ban on replying. So you can reapply once they get their stuff together. And as long as they're aware that we're just waiting for outstanding materials so that we can make a decision.
There's been outreach made to, to the property owner regarding, because we want to help them with this tenant. This would also help any other, you know, future tenants in the plaza once we know what the, the units and spaces and what the parking requirements are, what these are there to see how they all work.
Make a motion to deny the site plan for 7280 Franklin Road.
Okey doke.
Second.
There's a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Elin?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. That was 7280. All right. That being said, is there any other business in front of the board this evening?
I just had two really quick announcements. If, for those of you that don't drive the Burbank area, Japones got paid 14 years after the permit approval. So I do genuinely want to thank CHC, although I'm sure no one's watching. I, it's, it's something that I am so excited for it to get done. And I noticed earlier today that the FRA put out their request for proposals for the Johnsonia site. So got that maybe to look forward to at some point.
All right.
That's it. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion made with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, aye. All those opposed? Not opposed? All right.
Thanks, guys.
Aye.
Have a great one, everybody.
And thank you, everyone.
Adjourned at 9:54.
Thank you for your.